Here we go gang. Aloha Pumata Kato, the September twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three Neighborhood Board Number Thirty-four meeting is called to order. Welcome to our Ma'apu'apule Hona'atai Haleh Community Forum. My name is Anthony Motana Paris and I serve as your board chair. We are holding a hybrid meeting and we have community members online via WebEx and in person at Kapule Haleh Conference Rooms A and B. For order and decorum, if you wish to speak, please raise your virtual hand or your actual hand if you're in person. Wait for the presiding officer to recognize you before speaking and please introduce yourself for the record. If I miss any hands in person or online, please feel free to get the attention of our neighborhood board assistant Logan Hutchison, especially chat when you're using WebEx. Speakers have three minutes to talk about any item on the agenda. Those giving reports, they have up to ten minutes and presentations on materials was provided previously distributed online through our neighborhood Google Drive. Please remember to silence your electronic devices in person and please keep yourself unmute when you're online if you're not talking. And please remember again to state your name for the record and makes note keeping so much easier for myself, our secretary, Nikiala Lindstone, and Logan Hutchison, our new board of assistants. This is our community forum, so everyone is asked to engage with the spirit of aloha. Be free to vigorously debate the agenda items. Remember to treat each other with respect, especially during your passionately advocating. Let's honor each other by keeping to the lot of times we're speaking and collectively finish our forum in a timely manner. So are there any questions before we get going this evening? You see, man, with that, may I ask our neighborhood board assistant, he will call please.
Yes, Chair Bosler. Dudley. Herrera. Kahela.
Hey y'all.
Khan. Livstone.
Yo.
Singleton.
Here.
Ta'ala. Harris.
Yo.
We have five out of nine members present here and we do have forum at this time.
Excellent. We'll get going with our city monthly reports with Honolulu Fire Department and they just headed out because they got an emergency call and we just wished them well. So we're hopefully they're handling whatever that needs to be handled in our neighborhood right now. And with that, let's go off to HPD, Honolulu Police Department, please.
All of the board chair members. Sergeant Borofulid, HPD, District Eight, please. Have the stats for the month of August, twenty twenty-three for Kapule, Motu'ego and Mau'akau. So for the month of August, motor vehicle deaths, twenty-seven, eight in our area. Murderies, twenty-five, eight in our area. Deaths, one hundred and thirty-six in our area. One officer is entering a motor vehicle for the night, which six was in our area. Thirty-three speeding tickets. Two hundred and forty-one clothing violations. Citations issued, parking violations of ninety. Photo citations, photo citations, three hundred and sixty-four. Photo calls for service, eight thousand seventy-one, which Kapule was twenty-three when we were voiced. So just one announcement, this weekend. Uh, Ma'apu'ego, sorry, Makaha Bridge is being replaced. So traffic is closed, the street is closed from eight PM Friday night to eight PM Sunday. The posted public, we had to go past the Makaha Beach. And we want to reset it.
Mahalo for the report, are there any questions from fellow board members? Are there any questions from the community?
Could you please speak into the mic?
Can you hear us okay? Can you hear us okay? Sorry, can you hear us okay? Can you hear us okay?
It's the speakers that's difficult to hear.
Okay, we'll try to adjust the microphone in the future, Auntie Marta, thank you for raising this concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Honolulu Police Department? Grina, thank you so much for the report, we appreciate your service, mahalo. And now let's go to the Board of Water Supply, is the representative here with us this evening? Not seeing them at this time, let's go on to the mayor's representative.
Not here.
Not seeing the mayor's representative here at this time, we get to go to our council member, Angela Tabor. Seeing that she's not here at this time and well, we're blazing through our, our, our agenda this evening. Let's get to the Ompo Report with Uncle Frank online.
Yeah, I'm here. At, at the Citizen Advisory Committee September meeting, the Ompo Executive Director, Mark Garrity, reported there were three hundred and twenty-five participants in a survey they did for the Hawaii Commute Go Multimodal Challenge. He now is looking for comments on the newly updated Ompo website. Concerning a question from Daisy Marai of the Waikiki Residents Association about possible changes to the Alaui Bridge design affecting funding. He said that federal funds of twenty-five million dollars will still be received. Bob Lanile of Neighborhood Board Twenty-seven North Shore expressed concern about fires impacting transportation planning. Then Scott Brady of the Department of Transportation Services briefed the CAC on the Active Transportation Monitoring Program as part of the twenty forty-five Oahu Regional Transportation Program. Regional trends are used to justify funding for projects. There now is technology available to count bicycles and pedestrians, as known as micro-mobility. Sensors and cameras record volumes and geographic diversity across the island. Obviously, concentration is on downtown Honolulu and the highest weekday examples given were seven hundred and ninety-one bicycles on King Street westbound and four thousand six hundred pedestrians on Kohio Avenue. A motion was approved to submit the study to the Policy Board. In response to an email request from me after the meeting, Mr. Brady sent vehicle screen line counts in Makakilo, which were then forwarded to you. The declining CAC monthly attendance was discussed by Samantha Lara of Ompo, especially the need for a quorum in order to conduct meetings, they need thirteen for the forty-four members. I suggested that participation might be helped if the Policy Board did not continue to oppose having the CAC chair as a voting member. Finally, the October meeting of the CAC was canceled by Ompo. Mahalo.
Thank you, Uncle Frank, and Donadio, our neighborhood board representative to the Citizen Advisory Committee for Ompo. Are there any questions on the report from fellow board members? Are there any questions from the community at large? Grina, thank you again for the thorough report and there is a summary online in Big Cloud Drive, thank you, Uncle Frank. At this time, we're going to community and board concerns and announcements and we'll start with fellow board members, are there any concerns or announcements you wish to raise? Chair recognizes Secretary Nikiala Lindstone.
I don't see Dr. Killman dead yet. I'm concerned, and, and, and it's, it's, it's strange not to see him at Neighborhood Board. I feel this is, this is, it's, it's. Um, anyway, um. I'm concerned that there have been several projects that have erected within our community within the last month that have not been brought to the Neighborhood Board. Um, one has been, one. One was brought up in, pointing is now on August thirty-first and it was the the massive tanks, search fuel tanks in Kalailoa. One point five million barrels of fuel are now stored in Kalailoa. I'm sorry, I believe in Campbell Industrial. But this project was not brought before the Neighborhood Board. I'm just concerned, not just this, but there was a beautiful groundbreaking and I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of it, on an affordable housing project. Parkway, I think it was. Parkway Village, so beautiful, but it was not, I don't recall it being brought before the Neighborhood Board at all. I don't know anything about it, except that a beautiful groundbreaking occurred within the past month on this project. And it looks wonderful, um, but no community insight on, on this project at all, and that we've not been brought before the community, the Neighborhood Board. I'm, I'm concerned on this. Um. These, first, the, the tanks, um, I, you know, I'm sure that much better having the fuel stored here at Campbell Industrial than at Kapu'kaki Red Hill. However, it would have been appreciated to have heard of this project. Does it benefit the community? How does it benefit the community? What are the impacts on the community? We do not know because it was not brought before the community at all. So what is, it's being kept from the community? I worry about that. This beautiful project of affordable housing. Nothing, we have no insight into this project at all. We just know that it was reported on and the news is passing, nothing was brought before. But we have no insight into, I'm concerned about, um, projects that are being directed within our community that we have no insight on.
Thank you, Secretary Nikiala Lindstone, for raising the concerns over island energy services that is storing fuel or potentially storing fuel from Kapu'kaki Red Hill. And we will note for the record that it is a, an agenda item on the board business requesting appropriate parties for an update because checking our records, no one approached us. Our board, Neighborhood Board is taking a position in order to actually protect our buy for the offer across the entire island. So we stand in solidarity with everyone, but what our community did not agree to was to take full burden of the fuel with no community input whatsoever. So we're hoping that this was some misunderstanding, excitement of all of the government agencies doing this and that we will invite them to come and talk story with us to see what's going on and what we can do to make sure our community is not yet again holding the burden of the island's waste disposal. Homeless shelters, rehabilitation centers, trash, ash, industrial pollutants, and now the waste, I'm sorry, and now the potential fuel from Kapu'kaki, so. Definitely amplify the concern raised by board member Nikiala Lindstone. Regarding Parkway Village, we can also add to the board agenda if you wish, by two-thirds vote, to request that they come and talk story with us about what's going on. Because we're neighbors, whether or not you like it or not. Okay, are there any other concerns from fellow board members at this time?
Online, Singleton.
Come back to you afterwards, I see. So we'll go to board member online, Mr. Singleton.
Yes, I, I want to echo the remarks from, I didn't see who made the announcement about Parkway Village, but it happens to be right around the corner from my home and I knew nothing about it. So the homeowners association didn't send us any notifications. Now you have these big black barriers all up, uh, covering the, so you won't see the project. But I took a walk down there when they had the, uh, the groundbreaking ceremony. I didn't have time to go down before they started it, but I went down afterwards and saw that, took a nice picture of that beautiful project, like you said, that's gonna be proposed for being constructed. So I had concerns as a homeowner around here too as well, so not knowing that project. So somebody from the city and state, if they could, like you said, get back, get us, get, get with us and make sure this, we have input on projects like this in the future, that would be highly recommended.
Thank you, board member Singleton, appreciate it. Okay, so we'll go to, oh, go ahead.
Want to raise a concern about community members concerning speed on Makakila Drive again. The, the monitors were great. We are, we need the members to pause every year there's speed, but they're still, we're still getting concern raised to us that people are still speeding. Not sure what we can do about it, but we definitely lost a lot of crosswalks, so there aren't many crosswalks on Makakila Drive anymore. Not many speed bumps.
And thank you, board members Singleton and Howard, to bring up Parkway Village again and reemphasizing Makakila Drive speeding concerns and also lack of pedestrian crosswalks, which we used to have. But now they disappeared with recent road paving. Now we'll go to our community members raising concerns or questions, please. Right over here.
Thank you very much, Chair. My name is Melodya Dupan, I'm also one of the newly elected CRI for the Red Hill. I'm very concerned when we brought that up, this is one of the jobs of the CRI, which is a community representation initiative under the twenty twenty-three Administrative Order of Consent, the meaning of the ten elected people job would be to relay back to the Navy and the EPA and to any concerns that the community may have. And we are having our first meeting on October fourth. The Navy would like us to have our meeting closer to the pier by Pearl Harbor. But we also have members that are in active exile. They don't want to be anywhere close to the waterway that causes all this pain and suffering. So I am trying to get a place at our state Capitol and it will be open to the public and we want the public to have the same standing as we do as elected CRI pilots. So we're looking at October fourth, next week Wednesday, from one o'clock to four o'clock. Hopefully we can get a memo and it will be live streaming. And it will be at the auditorium, which is near, we'd like to target. We do welcome former members to come and wish, voice your concern. Because like you said, you did not even know that there was defuse from public company at that time, neither did we. We know that the opening ceremony is gonna be on October sixth. We will have a couple to give a prayer. But the defuse is supposed to start on October sixteenth. So seeing that there was a spill already at Island, sorry, Island Energy Services in which sixty-two million gallons is targeted to be transferred and, and stored there. It's very concerned and I can see how this board have brought. This is used to leave and we're supposed to be in frontline, but the Navy had not been forthcoming that they're even starting to do this procedure. Much of, much of the defuse is transferred from Pearl Harbor to Park Pacific, that area, by supertanker. And we don't know when those supertankers are coming in, let alone why we're even bringing in supertankers. And there's only a thirteen miles from one pier, Pearl Harbor, and hotel pier to Campbell Industrial. So for myself, I'm also concerned that it's been done. So we do welcome, also, is there any more? I'm just concerned, oh, it's, anything for the board. Absolutely correct. Today is when I made the question and Sergeant at Arms has been initiated to, I'm working towards with Senator Kehoe Paloli and Jules had contacted Sergeant at Arms and they're doing construction to the pond. And pond is going, and so they're doing construction at five o'clock. So my initial request was to have the auditorium in five o'clock to eight o'clock. They closed the garage at five o'clock. So unfortunately, it looks like we're gonna have to adjourn our business hours.
Yeah, how are you getting the information out, so are you being written? Probably for, for the community, you maybe can't be there, because I just think that's one floor, that's where people are working, or people are going to get. Or how, yeah, there's. Or something to do there.
Yep, quite true. Oh, also, so live and Zoom, we were considering today of sending out a survey. We probably will come up with, I'm probably too weird, probably people on the, the question. Yeah, so, thank you Chair for this opportunity. I will go ahead and ask some children with the media representatives. Do you know who's coming? I'm just wondering because sometimes, and I'm familiar with sounds we heard a lot very well. I know that sometimes people who don't have the, that break. No, that's right, they're all gone, they're not here, they're all, yeah. And we are, of course, mindful of the potential federal government shutdown. So right now, they're all off island and in their own speed, and they have no decision-making power. Um, I'm kind of, I'm delighted. That's the best thing to do. Hopefully on October fourth, we'll have, we're coming up to late there, you see, probably. Concerning that. Because right now, it's, it's really, the essence should be developing trust with the Navy. You know, and we, one of my concerns is that we got to okay, it's dating up. But it's not, it's the Navy that's gonna say, okay, we are remorseful, we can reach home, we have a retreat for, we find. And now we're gonna make it for. We're all, but, but, but. I remember Lindstone saying, we've got, we've got a spill that we didn't, we didn't anticipate. So again, non-hysterical, very difficult to, you know, communicate. Any other questions? I'll, I'll, thank you very much, Chair.
Just for anyone else.
Just having a problem hearing and that's this here, this, this thing is not, the volume is very, it's my fault for not being there, but it's not very clear, whatever we're saying in there.
Yeah, I was just gonna say. I was just gonna say, if you guys can hear me okay, I was just gonna let everyone know in person, if you guys could just project your voice towards the microphone for the people online. I'm not sure if it's an internet connectivity thing or some problem with my system, but yeah, people are just having a little bit hard time following along, so if you could just project your voice.
Need a recap of what we're just talking about?
Oh, geez.
No.
So I will take this time to remind everyone, including fellow board members, that the conversation should be directed to the Chair. You know, we have new members here, in order for order and decorum to flow, but we really appreciate Anthony Melodya Dupa for coming and raising those concerns. And let me reiterate the concern that I've heard from my fellow board members. It's not that Kapule Makakilo, Hona'atai Haleh Neighborhood Board Number Thirty-four has an issue with the transportation of the fuel necessarily from Kapu'kaki to our neighborhoods. It's the fact that in such a monumental project, our own city ordinance requires such a project to come before our board and they did not. As far as we know, and this is an anomaly. So we're wondering whether or not there was some special emergency declaration from the city or the state or the federal government which override our own protocol. Going back to what our CRI representative said about building community trust. Right now, this is not a step in the right direction because the very neighborhood board, the projects located in, no one came. Not the federal government, not the state government, not a city official, not a contractor, not the operator. So we have a concern with the breach of protocol.
Chair, may I?
Thank you.
Mahalo.
Mahalo.
And that's for one point five million barrels of fuel being stored in our community.
So as I said earlier, I hope this is a misunderstanding and everyone in their exuberance of trying to resolve the issue, just forgot to actually do this part. And if that is the case, we welcome them to come and rectify the mistake. Okay, are there any other questions or concerns from the community at this time? Presentations, go ahead. And let's see if we can project.
I'll speak up. Well, first off, good evening, everybody, I'm Tony Gasponton, company, and what I did want to do is just give you an update on how things are going with the Kalailoa project. You coming?
Can we do a test? Can, can you hear Uncle Tony?
Yeah, could you guys hear me? And I'm trying to project it now.
So it's buffering.
Oh, it's buffering, okay. Yeah, so the progress on the project, things are going very well right now. This first image, if you guys could check it out, see, some of the parking area was paved and they just did it a few days ago. So things are going good, not ate, they're moving very fast. And in July, I remember board member Kapelik, he asked a question regarding services being provided at the clinic. So I did some research and then, well, first off, the clinic is just a clinic, it's not like a full-blown hospital. So it's open Monday through Saturday from seven-thirty to four o'clock. And then on Tuesday, they are gonna stay open a little later until six. Now, although it's just a clinic, it's Now, although it's just a clinic, it's gonna still offer a lot of service. The clinic's gonna offer primary and specialty care. There's gonna be mental health and audiology, physical and occupational therapy, even some dental and prosthetic services as well as some laboratory services. So this clinic is gonna be helping out the veterans in a very, very big way. So, Board Member Capella, I hope that answers the question. Okay, okay, let me just show you some more images of what's going on out there real quick. See, um, bike racks are being installed and they do wanna facilitate other types of, uh, transportation. You can take a look here that they're even installing some of the landscape. See, so the goal here is trying to get this thing completed. Oh gosh, okay, this image, if you remember previously, I would sometimes show you this hallway and work was being done. Bottom of the finish work is being completed, so these guys are moving very, very well. Okay, check out this image. This is another one I would show you guys sometime, but do you notice something different? The lights are on, there you go. The lights are on, so that just shows that they are doing a very good job. Construction is still scheduled to be completed in January. And then the middle of next year is when the clinic can open for services. Now, if some of you driven over there out of F T R, you might have noticed that things have changed a little bit and it's because some remedial work that's being done. So the Ma'kei lanes are now only for Diamond Headbound traffic. And the Malvin lanes are for the Leewardbound traffic. And again, this is just to do some remedial work. The remedial work initially is being done and then it's gonna shift back again to what it was. No matter what, you're still gonna have the two lanes, but the yellow lanes go back to the Ma'kei side. So we're never gonna stop traffic on it. We always wanna keep traffic moving, but we're just gonna have to move it around. One other thing that happened out there is Gentry's coming in and they're gonna need some telephone, electricity, all that kinda stuff. And Hawaiian Telecom came back and said, hey, there is an existing telephone box that needs to be upgraded. Can you guys upgrade it? And they just told us this about two weeks ago. We asked them, what's going on? And then this is the telephone box that provides service to their central office, which if you remember is the nine-one-one center for Kapole, Makapilo, all those areas. So, okay, let's see what we can do for this new box based on Hawaiian Telecom, because they're gonna be coming in to serve Gentry's room. We're gonna need, unfortunately, about six weeks for that box to come in and then install it. And then that, hopefully, get all the other work completed. The road waves are now scheduled to be done in about December. But no matter what, we're gonna keep traffic. The traffic signal over at the Kapole Wa'kei intersection, if you look at this image, you can see some of the signal bars have gone up. By the end of next week, all the construction should be completed. They're gonna put up the traffic signals and then after that, we turn it over to Hawaii Electric. Hawaii Electric will need about six weeks to come in there and pull all the cable that they need to pull and make sure everything can get energized. After that, it gets turned over to the city and county. The city and county will then need another month to a month and a half to actually put in all the equipment to make sure the signal operates properly. So there's still gonna be another two months or so before the signal actually becomes operational. But if you drive over there now, you start to see a lot of them. So that's my quick update. Does anybody have any questions?
So too much, so that signal should be
They weren't too much, yes.
Uh, question online from Patrick Watson.
Go to community member Patrick Watson.
Yes, Chair, sorry, I had just my hand up as a community concern outside of the last presentation, sorry.
Okay, we'll come right back to you afterwards. Any other questions or concerns from the firm presenter? Very nice. Thank you so much for the brief update.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, now let's go to, uh, community member Patrick Watson.
All right, mahalo Chair, thank you. Um, I had one concern I wanted to share and that was, um, I had noticed a significant amount of water running through our storm drain right next to our house. Our property and the property next to a straddle and easement. And for four straight days, there was a ton of water coming through the storm drain and it drains into one side of the street and then runs to the other side of the streets. I could hear the water going across to the other drain. I contacted D F M about it and they tracked it down to a company called Hawaii Water Service who apparently has a big reservoir underground up in Kapole Nolos. And apparently they're having a problem with a, like a shut-off valve or an emergency valve, so they had to drain their water. It's all potable water that provides drinking water to Barber's Point and Kalailoa. And so I just wanted to find out a little bit more about this company, why it is that they just dumped basically freshwater out into the storm drain. It was, it, it just seemed like this time, you know, in this time, we're struggling so much with water crisis and things like that and Red Hill and conservation. And so I thought that was really unusual and so did D F M. They, in order to track down the information, uh, they were bounced around like eight different, you know, calls to finally get to the, the source. But they weren't told like how much water or anything like that. They just told that that was what was happening. So I just wanted to bring it to your folks' attention and then, um, I just had one more question about the status of the D R Horton, uh, undergrounding, uh, utilities uh, situation. I don't know if you guys did an update about that or anything, but, uh, given what happened in Lahaina, I think it's kinda more critical than ever to find out this, you know, what that resolution is, yeah.
Thank you very much, um, member Patrick Watson, for raising up two concerns, one with potable water being flushed down storm drains. And also, um, inquiry regarding the underground power lines, uh, requests that our board move to the various entities. What I can share with you regarding the power lines, at this time, um, the neighborhood board has not received any official response from any of the entities in which we communicated to, asking for an update, not even the Land Use Commission uh, at this time. So, um, let me go back onto our docket for, uh, inquiry yet again, formally, uh, for a response, because again, our concern there as a neighborhood board, we pointed out was was the appropriate protocol followed? That was our major concern. We have a position on underground power lines, but in this instance, was the appropriate protocol followed? And we have not received, uh, a response. Thank you for your concerns. Is there any other community concerns or questions?
Good evening, Chair. But members. Which is some, well, we have answered from one of our I just wanted to address what Board Member Mike Stone was bringing up. I'd like to make it clear for everybody that it's not a misunderstanding, it's a problem with the process. Cause if you folks remember, well, you guys weren't on board yet, but I want you guys to pay attention. Um, about five years ago, they, they were doing that convenience center in Kalailoa over Campbell Industrial. And then, um, the solid, the, the white waste, uh, appliances and all that. And, um, I had to bring it up here because nobody was, it wasn't, they didn't address, they didn't bring it up for anybody's comments. And I was lucky to be an archaeologist and realizing that there's some deficiencies documentation of our natural resources, cultural resources, potential effects, mitigation and all of that. Couldn't even bring it up here because nobody even told you, right? For the, the folks here. And, um, there was a presentation later, but by that time, all of those had happened. Um, and so a lot of stuff is like this beyond help, right? Um, so right now on the other side of the, uh, the N H L sanctuary, the mound is almost finished. Finding this group of folks in the environmental division, they've been really cooperative. But had, uh, our N H L not been paying attention, they had sixteen endangered avahina hina that went down to one specimen. And thankfully, we got to an agreement with them, it's up to, I'm begging them for some help us with irrigation, but the point is, I watched, I'm from one of the alley. I've seen tractor after tractor after tractor in my backyard between our house and, uh, the harbor. Moving stuff around, not once have they come up over here. Recently, I just seen them. And then, you know, cover crater, other things moving around. Got a pier on the shop bed.
He plugged this in, I can't see the plug.
Anthony Mayda.
Oh, hi.
Oh, sorry, sorry. My, my computer's dying.
Hello. This is, okay, so anyways, um, the thing is that, um, I just wanna make it clear that that's, um, perhaps we should look into the process and make, you know, like, hey, okay, what is? Cause what is the city project? What is the state project? This is federal with the water. So, um, I think the problem is not a misunderstanding, it's just not part of the process. They're gonna come and tell everybody after the fact, after the fact is too late. Um, and, uh, the other thing about the, uh, the water, which I heard from someone high up in the environmental um, very recently, is that because the water under this cap rock is not potable, we have a little more leeway, but that is not the point, it's just that, you know, we still don't agree, right? We wanna know what are the precautions. Last thing I wanna say, um, not related, is that, um, the helicopters, I brought this up last time. These helicopters is getting out of hand. And when I was a kid or a little younger, they used to have, um, a military person here every single meeting. They would say, sorry, there was an emergency, sorry, this happened, there was a rescue. Nobody's here, but the agreement was they weren't gonna be doing their helicopters back and forth out of respect for the community. Now they're not here and they're not, they're not even saying, so we don't know. And so I would like, you know, if we can bring it up to them and say, and this is all ours, this really is all ours. They gotta, they gotta slow down on that, uh, as about it, so, thank you.
The Chair recognizes Board Member, Bernard.
Um, I've seen, I've seen, um, army helicopters, but I don't know if there was a mission with postcar or something. But nine times out of ten, it was like, uh, army helicopter. So if they're going to fulfill, like, I don't know, what was the agreement? I don't know, the agreement was they wouldn't come over, so but now, I don't know what happened to that agreement that is okay for now for them. You know, because we're not asking, I don't know.
Thank you. Mahalo, um, for coming here, community member, raising concerns, highlighting what member Michaela Winston raised again. Again about process, about community being informed, so we can provide appropriate input along the way and make sure that we protect the interests of our community. And also raising up what's the standing agreement with the military's usage of the airspace above our communities, our neighborhoods. Those concerns were raised last time, they did assure us the last times. Uncle Moon and even, um, Mr. Colin previously asked about that, they clarified that urgency situations. But we can reach out again and request an update about what may have changed. Any other community concerns or questions? Oh, come first and then we'll go to board member.
Hello, I'm Sheila Madares, I live in Kapole Nolos. I just wanted to say thank you to the Department of Transportation. I was here last, the last meeting, um, raised the issue about the dry brush. And, um, they were there and they shared it all. I wanna thank also the prisoners of Kalava that did the hard work, the heavy lifting. And, uh, what I would like to see is a, a maintenance plan. So that we, we, the community will have predictability of when these scheduled maintenances are so that we're not hounding it every time our grass is out of control. And I understand they're under men, but I think just for keep their sanity and our sanity in check, if there was a scheduled maintenance plan, that would help us all. But thank you very much. And as far as the helicopter, it could be, they're under, I'm sorry, I'm prior service. So could be different, um, companies, uh, units that are in charge so that, that didn't pass over to the next chain of command. So you probably need to speak with the actual, if it's Gofield, the division commanders change out, brigade commanders change out, squadron commanders change out. So you guys will need to make sure that it's the right people getting that, that information. But thank you again.
Mahalo, community member, for your advocacy and making sure that you raise the concern here about the fuel on the side of our homes, making us just a little bit safer. And talk one hundred percent to support the idea of a maintenance plan. The last neighborhood board meeting, we did ask the mayor's office to see whether or not they had uh, fire preparedness plan coordinating all of the different branches of government and private landowners in our community. As we are a city organ, we're gonna ask the mayor's office to help us coordinate that. Okay, any other, um, oh, yes, Board Member Michaela.
Um, first and foremost, Councilmember Angelia Polis here, she came a little late. Wondering if she can present right after this. Um, but really quickly, I know, um, Vice Chair Dr. Shoney Bedley is not here. Um, but I wanted to bring up something that was dear to his heart that he brought up to the board and that is on the neighborhood plan and the purpose of the neighborhood plan, he brought up to, to the board, which is to increase and assure effective citizen participation in decisions of government. And he was concerned about that. And, um, I'm wondering if to increase, um, effective citizen participation, if perhaps taking our presentations and bringing them up a bit, maybe after our community board concerns, bringing our presentations up a bit, cause sometimes our presentations after all of our, uh, monthly reports, sometimes our presentations, we don't have enough time for them. And so sometimes I feel like that could discourage citizen participation because sometimes our community who waits all night long to present, sometimes they don't have time to present and so they have to wait a whole month to present, that can be become discouraging. But if we bring our presentations up after community concerns, they will be assured that they have time to present during the evening and they will never be bumped after I will be there. Um, I don't know if that makes sense. If we could just rearrange it, I think that will help to address Vice Chair Dr. Shoney Bedley's concern over citizen participation by um, and maybe our presenters today might feel that, um, if they were to present after the, the community concerns today, they would have felt a little bit better. Um, because they were up in the, in the chain.
Thank you for the request from Ward Member to, um, rearrange the agenda to push presentations further up. I'll take that under advisement and work with N C L to determine whether or not that is possible or permissible, but I think we can.
I can answer now if you like.
No, actually you don't, because we are at seven forty. I think we still have other things to do. Um, we still have, um, community concerns from online.
Yes, uh, Keith, Mayor's rep.
No, okay, so now, uh, we'll go back to reports, I'm hearing all the community concerns from the city monthly reports, starting with the mayor's office. Thank you.
Hi, um, this is Keith Suzuka. First of all, I'd like to just apologize, I hopped in about ten minutes late because of technical difficulties and, um. I'm not sure where we are on the agenda, but I did want to at least, uh, give the, uh, community and the board. Uh, responses, um, back to the issues which were raised, um, last month. And, and by the way, I intended to come, uh, but, uh, in person, but I, I'm sorry, it just didn't work out. So that's why I'm on video right now. Um, but, um, let me, uh, give you. Uh, first of all, the question that, um. We posed, uh, to the city on behalf of the neighborhood board, uh, last month. And then I'll give you the response. Uh, the first, uh, issue dealt with the, uh, maintenance of the median strips. And the issue that was posed was neighborhood board members and community members specifically requested. That Makikilo Drive median be maintained every two to three weeks, uh, five to six weeks is too long. If this is not possible, please explain why. Is the problem lack of funding, lack of manpower? Please explain. The community would also like to know whether alternative strategies can be explored. Like artificial turf grass, drought tolerant native plants, designation of the median as a park. Or allowing a nonprofit organization, uh, like for example, the Palehua Community Association. To be in charge of the maintenance of the median strip. Another resident asked why the Makikilo Drive median receives substandard service. Compared to the median along Kamakila Boulevard, the grass next to the police station. Kapole Regional Park and Makikilo Neighborhood Park. The response, uh, from DFM is as follows. Roadway medians island wide are maintained on rotational basis. Current staffing allow for about a five to six week interval between maintenance. Although BFM is actively filling vacancies and hopes to reduce the interval when all of the vacancies have been filled. Based on the current positions available, when all vacancies have been filled. DFM will be able to perform maintenance on a four to six week interval. Maintenance every two to three weeks by DFM is not possible as it does not have the resources. Installation of artificial turf or replanting of the medians with vegetation that remains at lower height. Would require additional funding and performed by a contractor. If interested in pursuing these alternatives, please discuss with your council member. For consideration in the upcoming fiscal year two thousand twenty-five budget. Designation of road medians as park would not be appropriate. As park facilities are intended to be utilized by the public for recreation. And it's not advised to have the median service as a recon, uh, a recreational facility. Nonprofit organizations may enter into agreements with the city to maintain road medians. Similar to Mililani Town Association that maintains the Mililani Road medians. The sprinkler system, it was, oh, actually, this is, this is an old response to an old comment. The sprinkler system was recently serviced during the week of August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three and are in good working condition. The sprinkler system runs twice daily at two AM and six PM. The medians along Kamakila Boulevard are maintained privately, not by the city. The grass at the police station, Kapole Regional Park and Makakilo Neighborhood Park. Are maintained by city staff dedicated to those facilities. In Kapole, DFM only maintains the median on Kapole Parkway from ninety-one dash fifty-four thirty-one. Kapole Parkway near Wendy's to the train tracks west of Kalowaka Drive. And maintenance is performed similarly to Makakilo Drive on a rotational basis. But on a less frequent basis, about every six to seven weeks. Every, uh, all, uh, other ro- road medians like the villages of Kapole are maintained by the state's. Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation. Uh, so that was the first topic that we posed to the city. The second topic, uh, was, it's just a reporting, um. A resident requested updated statistics be presented to the board, uh, continuing into next month. This is for the rail. And, um, the response from DTS is opening weekend seventy-one thousand seven eleven, first month. Uh, one hundred sixty thousand five hundred seventy-five, average weekday three thousand seventy-one. I actually, now that I read it, I think that was already, um, reported the last time. The Makakilo Drive extension. Um, follow, the issue was following the mayor's town hall meeting in this area. What results slash solutions has the mayor come up with to address the Makakilo Drive extension? The mayor and the managing director met with several members of the community on April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Regarding the Makakilo Drive extension. The Department of Transportation Services has pre-prepared a revised environmental assessment for the fill option. However, until the project is put back on the statewide transportation improvement program. And tran- transportation improvement project, the Federal Highway Administration will not review the EA. As such, the final design plans cannot proceed until the EA has been approved. The Makakilo Drive Extension Project is currently on hold, on hold until it is put back on the STIP slash TIP. Um, the last issue, uh, dealt with, uh, the wildfire management. What is the city's plan for wildfire management? This area and surrounding areas are deemed the highest risk on the island. The board is aware that there are multiple jurisdictions and organizations involved. But what is the, uh, coordinated plan to manage these areas to prevent a similar situation to what happened in Lahaina? The response, uh, it's coming from, uh, the, uh, Honolulu Fire Department. The Honolulu Fire Department maintains a strong passion regards to the threat and impact of wildfire, wildland fires. Recent actions taken regarding wildland fire management include, but it's not limited to the following. Developed and delivered a department-wide wildland fire advisory. That includes best practices and cause slash origin investigations. Augmented wildland fire emergencies response. Response deployment protocols increased from one engine to two engines and a tanker. Identified island-wide wildland urban interface areas of concern. That were ca- categorized on a risk matrix to focus prevention efforts. Issuing, issue, uh, notices of violations for eighteen inch or high, higher vegetation. That is within thirty to one hundred feet of any structure. Collaborated with the state of Hawaii's Department of Transportation to identify possible fire, fire break areas to be cleared. Working with various city and county Honolulu State and federal agencies on wildfire. Uh, wildland fire prevention preparedness and response efforts. That's, th- those are the responses from the concerns that were raised last week, uh, last month.
Thank you for the report from the mayor's office. Are there any, um, questions or concerns from fellow board members? Are there any questions or concerns from the community at large for the mayor's?
Uh, Frank in audio and that's great.
The, the chair recognizes Uncle Frank first and then Dad after. Uncle Frank Watson.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Suzuka described the catch twenty-two that Director Morton told us. The Makakilo Drive Extension was in. There is one thing that the mayor can direct, and that's a screen line count on Makakilo Drive. Uh, more or less a beam St. Jude's, so we can get a current, uh, number. For the vehicles going up and down the drive on a weekday. Uh, the information that Mr. Brady gave us, uh, uh, from DTS. Uh, was several years old and we could use an update that at least would give us a chance to making a case on, on this thing. Thank you.
Could, could you, just, I, I just wanted to put this down in my notes, could you say what that study is again, please?
Uh, yes, sir. The, the screen line count, you know, the rubber counters that go across the bo- the street. We haven't had a screen line count between H one and the first light. Uh, if you were to get the mayor to direct, Director Morton. To put screen line counters of beam St. Jude's Church. Maybe we could get a decent count on the current number of vehicles post pandemic that go up and down that drive. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Uncle Frank. Any other type of questions from the? Okay, now let's go to that's great.
Thank you, uh, good evening. I wasn't quite able to catch everything you said about the median. Uh, I find it interesting that, uh, that different medians are, are handled by different city departments. If that's what in fact you said, um. I, I'm just surprised by your answer, I'm not quite sure where to go with all this information from here. I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to sift through that information at, at some point and see what transpires from here. Um, as far as the, um, rail numbers go, uh, the numbers you gave tonight are the same ones that you gave us last.
Yeah, I, I, I noticed.
Do you have, do you have?
The other thing I was, the other thing I was directed to, um, and I should have clicked on it, but except I didn't realize that this was the same number. Is we, we were basically, I, I was basically directed to the DTS website. Um, where apparently the skyline ridership stats are posted on a monthly basis.
Uh-huh. Well, can you continue to bring them to, here to these meetings? Cause I'm sure lots and lots of people would, uh, would like to have those numbers.
Sure, I, I, I'll click on that every, um, month from now on and bring.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, community member, that's great. Now let's go to community member Patrick Watson.
Mahalo, Chair. Yes, I just wanted to, um, add to the conversation regarding the Makakilo Extension Drive. I know that council member Topola did a really good town hall meeting regarding the specifics of that. Um, a while back with, uh, Roger Morton and, um. So I guess the question is, um, in the event of an emergency. Uh, like we kind of saw what was happening in Lahaina, right? People were just basically trapped, there was no way out. And that's my biggest concern with the Makakilo Extension Drive is that there's only one way out right now. But it looks like that other little road that, um, kinda, kinda dead end is a cul-de-sac, kind of a little bit. Uh, I guess you'd call it to the right or to the west of the Makakilo Extension Drive. Is there any contingencies for making that an emergency road? Cause I think there's just like a chain link fence right there in some grass, like in, you know, when push came to shove, can that be traversed? And people allowed to get down the hill to, you know, uh, Kuolakai Parkway? Has anybody ever talked a little bit about that?
Let, let, let me, um, ask about that. I can tell you that at, I think the last cabinet meeting. Um, one of the things that the mayor and managing director reported, uh, was that they were in discussions with. And, and this may not, it's probably not directly relevant to what you're saying, but it, it's tangentially related. Um, with, with the military, um, because apparently, uh, the military has various roads o- o- across the island. That, um, the city, uh, would like to, uh, explore the opportunity to use them as, um, as. Escape routes and other way, other things. So I, I, I think your point is excellent in that. Um, it may not be anything to do with the military, but it, it's what the mayor has been, uh, focused on. Which is trying to figure out different ways to, uh, get traffic moving and out in the case of something like Lahaina.
Uh, I, I appreciate that feedback and just to, to follow up with that. Because I know that the challenge was brought up that, that valley at the end of the current Makakilo, uh, kinda dead end. Is the challenge, it has to be bridged, and I think there's some cultural or, um, historic property elements involved in going over that bridge. But we just got a letter from Grace Pacific talking about their project and asking for the, the renewal of their, their, uh, permit, yeah? And part of it is taking fill and refilling some of the area that they've dug out. And why can't they become a partner in this thing to try to help solve this, you know? I mean, they got a, a pretty big stake in this area and, uh, I think they could be extremely helpful to try to solve this problem. Um, especially because they're asking of the community if they can keep digging and building and doing stuff right here. So that's just some, uh, observations I had, but mahalo for your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, is there any other, okay, board member. So, uh, Uncle Frank, the question was, uh, related to the request to the mayor's office on the car count. Um, is this for twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five? In your estimation?
I'm sorry, I, I couldn't hear her question.
For the car count that we, we are requesting from the mayor's office. Um, is that for the twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five, do you believe? What's your best guess?
No, I, I think that, uh, they could direct those, uh, screen line counters. Uh, wouldn't take much effort to just put those counters across the road for, uh, maybe three to five weekdays. Uh, so we could get an accurate count that'll help our case. Uh, otherwise they'll continue with this, uh, uh, delaying the environmental assessment, uh, keeping it off the tip. Uh, for Mr. Suzuka's information, the drive was on the tip for several years. The final design was funded several years ago. And RM Towel, I don't know, there must be some man or woman sitting in a back room somewhere. Uh, not doing anything to complete that final design. We've been waiting for it. As long as DTS doesn't have a final design, they can defer construction on the drive. And as Roger Morton said, it's a catch twenty-two, and they're the ones creating it. Uh, obviously, if somebody put their heads together, they could get this thing resolved. And, uh, this has been an issue, uh, for the mayor's reps information. The drive was on the transportation for Oahu Plan twenty twenty-five. And that means we should have had that drive completed a long time ago. And it's still nowhere near completion. And people on, in the community have been waiting and waiting. Meanwhile, they're putting up a sixty-four million dollar pedestrian bridge over the Alawai. That seems like most people in Waikiki don't even want. So, uh, I know that's a different traffic, uh, alternative or whatever they call it, but, uh. If they want to put their heads together, they can come up with a solution to get that drive completed. Mahalo.
Thank you, Uncle Frank. So as I understand it, um, the car count will increase our advocacy efforts to put the Makakilo Drive Extension down on this dip tip.
Yes, sir.
That's the next step. We need the mayor to get the count so that we can go back with new information. Because the current information was pretty bad.
I, I may be misunderstanding what I was told, but, um. My, my understanding, and I, and I'll grant you that this is coming from the city, but is that the state removed. Um, the Makakilo, uh, drive from the s- the step. And, um, i- i- it's, so the city, basically the federal government cannot, uh, consider it. Until it's back on that list and it's not the city, but it's the state. Now, whether that's true and whether I conveyed it correctly, I, I apologize if I haven't. But I, I would ask that maybe some people need to also explore with your state representative. As to whether or not there is an issue at the state level to get this project back on that list. I, I, Department of Transportation.
I'm I'm sorry. I believe you have bad information there. That drive has always been a city project. And the state, uh, I believe Transportation Chair Farrara asked about the state making it a state road. And uh, Mr. Sniffin said, no way, thank you. Uh, they don't want to get in that briar patch. And that's a DTS project. It's a city project and it's up to the mayor and DTS to get that thing completed.
We can follow up with the mayor's office offline if you have further questions regarding this, but we do have records. And Uncle Frank, our representative and other community members have been tracking this for quite a while, so we can reach offline if you need further assistance. Okay, are there any other questions or concerns for the mayor's office? Yeah, no, thank you so much for the thorough report back. I really, really appreciate hearing. For by department's collaboration with all of the different parties in order to actually try and address our fire hazards. So mahalo.
Thank you very much.
With that, let's welcome up our council member Andrew Tupola.
Okay. So once it's been covered, I'm not recover anything, which I didn't see letters and take a look. Uh, the upper branch, we've already talked about it, it didn't get cut. So the pro city yard is actually what happens, walk through the drive. And so I think the whole issue is that I need to know that. Just a large sector of rush that they they um, trim. Hopefully getting a part, there are concerns about the whole, like, all during the season. They could ramp up the water. She said that they were told by MWS that they needed to um, serve. She said that they overshot the conservation and they covered too much, so she's trying to wrap back up the water. But she also said there could be other things that are leading to the holes and probably even with. She said that they're trying to figure out or not of course. I think uh, maybe certain in certain areas where they would have to do irrigation because she foresees this red hill problem being a permanent. Decreasing watering of things. So I brought a, so I'll say a little bit and then I'll show you all. Which um, Board Member Mikela was asking about, obviously it's way past the summer. They said that GP role is getting contracted. Looking by the end of October, learn and preparation of already covered RAKA. So I brought the actual R and presentation, so it's in the folder, it's just the movie. There, actually I don't even think everyone knows the word, but it's anyway. But over there, they said because GP role is out contract that they actually have to submit their control plans to get work on the street. Honestly think that, you know, when they have us in May, which Mikela was there. I think knowing that they have a contract or, you know, the same that it been done, but in the summer is. And they have to go and then apply the permits. Thank you so much. For putting the subway to work in, that we're gonna hang on to that for hope. Because everything on the Nekhi and Kama. Protection, look what it's gonna be either end of this year or next year. Uh, yeah, see, we did this, they should have been born. This is why I brought resolution twenty-two one fifty-one, which this is open, and it's about Cal Beach Park. It's because the city is going to retouch the Mopole Regional Master Plan. And they're actually asking and the community and they will be coming survey, but they're gonna ask what. You guys like the Mopole Regional, A G M, A P O, A um, bigger theater, maybe by the problem of. They were working much. So I brought this as an example because we worked with this Cal, we've resolution to so many people. Basically gave DPR eight exact things we wanted to happen in Cal and actually seven of the eight happened. So we got people to change what it changed the hours of approach, we got the game set. And I think my encouragement to this board is to not go through the meetings or emails, but then we actually make it into a resolution to exist. Then there can be no confusion, then we were clear. But something that's really important is that there are many people that reach out to me about Mopole Regional and just how much it's died off. And it used to have like this grandeur of youth and now it just looks like wasteland. And so people are concerned that it's it's the biggest part of Mopolei. And it looks like DPR has been investing money on it, so I would love for it to come with the resolution I contributed at the council. Making that real specific, everything, you know, from this walking area on the left to. But prepared by the skate park to the core area because I think if we don't get specifically DPR, then it's still gonna be. Only in the procure this here from this minor touch and um, so. Then for Mopole Regional. Just with that, because back then it's part by part because I'm tired of exchanging emails already. And I don't know what year people get it and then people come in and they don't remember both. So it'd be easier if you guys said, this is what should happen up here. This walking area needs to happen here, here, there. Better because one, but I think as they formalize their idea, you guys should come on the forefront of it. Instead of trying to track it on the backend and disagree with everything. So this one's totally from home. This one is that um, area is a little bit complicated. But they had these questions about E five, so if you look for that, it's just Q and A. I brought the Makakilo Drive Extension Town Hall slides because it does seem like everyone um, needs to go over the timeline. But over fifty, because there's some corrections that need to be made with the original assessment in two thousand and four. Was that there was a need for this, right? After they found no significant impact, then they started to go into the bridge option in twenty ten. Then H dot confirmed that RM Towel would get hired. That's correct. They needed federal funds to do this. So even though the city was spearheading it, the city could never do it without the state and federal having it. But I will iterate in the city was spearheading it. So not solely gonna pay for it, but spearheading it. So in October twenty thirteen, that's when RM Towel was hired and yes, the city gave three million dollars for their design plan. Twenty fourteen, H dot and the federal highways discussed a fill option because instead of fifty million, if they filled it, it'd be thirty-five. And in twenty fifteen, they basically came up with a report on that. And then in twenty sixteen, they determined that something was being triggered. Because historic preservation by filling it would hit a wine pool, a ditch component that was left there. They had suggested to do a fill over, which shifty usually allows fillovers for historic preservation, meaning that you're still preserving it. That you're gonna preserve it as you fill over it. Shifty for the first time said no. That there's not gonna be anyone, this was brought up by NHL. And so if anyone refused, like an EA, they have to start again. And no one actually came back at it. Once they refused it, no one said, oh no, that's not viable, they didn't, no one said any. Then in twenty seventeen, they added one point five million to finish it to about ninety percent. Because a portion of the EA has to be reviewed by the federal highway. So that's kind of where I disagree is because the city can do the ninety percent, but the federal highways has to look through all four. And then they have to verify that it's correct. Once they sign off, then the EA is considered. So then in twenty nineteen, they basically recommended that that the option is noble. And then in twenty nineteen, the NHL considered its red concern. And then from there, they said we do a wall instead of a fill. And then after that, it got taken off. But then it went from bridge to fill to wall. And then in twenty twenty-one, when it hit the wall option, the city had already exhausted the four point five million. And the four point five million was used to.
And we got like tens of thousands of cars and they don't care that we can't get out. But they built um, emergency access roads around, which actually we do use on a regular basis when there's accidents, fires, road closures. And that road that Mr. Watson's talking about is what I would suggest is a partnership with um. The quarry so that the road can be an emergency access onto their private property. And they would have to basically have a key and the city would have a key. That's how we run the emergency access roads in Y and I. But in any form of emergency, there's a protocol and how we open the gates and allow the public to go through. So maybe not for through fair, meaning every day it won't have cars. But I think that would possibly be after you read through all of this, a su- suggestion that I think all of the entities would go for. That's what I think. So, sorry, that was really long. The end. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tupola for your hard work and insights on how the board, particularly with the resolutions. That I think our community unfortunate recreation will be definitely looking forward. Chair recognizes, but not Mikela.
Yes, Councilmember Tupola, I'm super excited. I would very much like to work with you on this resolution for. Kapolay Regional Park. I will be very honest with you, though I do not, I am not. Super hopeful on it. I will be very honest with you in saying that I honestly feel that. The city and county of Honolulu really does not care about the history of Kapolay. And really took the name of Pu'ou Kapolay for this city. And really has no intention of honoring the history of Pu'ou Kapolay because it has not. Um, done a thorough or any sort of. Not even a miniscule type of good job in it through. In any of these years to this area um, at all. Um, but I will work with you.
Um, can I ask, did the mayor ever sit with you?
No, and the city has never recognized Pu'ou Kapolay for its history. It. The city and county of Honolulu has taken the name Kapolay from Cup, Pu'ou Kapolay, has put it everywhere. But has never recognized Pu'ou Kapolay, has neglected Pu'ou Kapolay in so many ways. Has used Kapolay Regional Park, has called it a park, has called it a skate park, has called it an archery range, but has. Done very little to call it Pu'ou Kapolay, has called very little for its history. Um, brother Ulu Koa has helped me. I will work with you as much as I can. I have little hope, but I would love to work with you. Because we will do it as much as we can, but I would love to work with you. But we have a huge agenda. I will work with you as much as I can. I have very little hope.
I think, you know, for me, the two parts that I had no hope for was Hokai Bay and Ka'au. Because who the heck cares about Ka'au? It's like way, way, way out there. But I had to bring the mayor and everybody. We brought the whole entourage out there, um, everybody. And then we had to go slow. We had to do protocol. We had to give them books and papers and letters and the whole community came out to educate. And it was interesting because I feel like that's never happened here and I I want it to happen here because it was like almost a moment where everyone stopped and it was like. Oh, wow, this is really neglected. And I was like, I've been telling you this. But once I brought them out there, they're like, this is real bad. I was like, it's real bad. Yeah, and so I think we need to do that in the right way. We need to have the protocol where we can actually have the mayor come. And I always say, once he sees it. And he feels it and he gets the explanation and then usually Laura's there and everybody else, then we start making it, but we need the document to follow. Cause I'm like a hawk with the document and I'm like, we went over these eight things where we at. Is one done? Is two done? So I've been doing this with Kapolay Regional through emails and it's just tiring already. Like the archery range, I'm tired of it, the skate park, like email, email, the the grass is dead, this is broken, the bathrooms. So I think we need to like formally say like, we are no more. Kapolay Regional Park and you guys calling this the second city, but no investment, no more. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Thank you so much. Any other board members?
Just to follow up with the um, the problems at the playground. Yeah, any response?
Are you talking about this playground?
Yeah.
The Kapolay Regional?
The holes, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about is that when I told Laura that there was holes, she said that they had cut back on the water, watering of the um, park. And the parks guy said, this is why there's holes everywhere is because the dirt is separating. Sorry.
I I was talking about the playground where the, it's like.
The rubber park.
Like over a foot inch or twelve inches holes in the kids playground. All over the playgrounds are these massive holes. The kids are playing and on the um. Like the monkey bars and the climbing things. And if you drop, it's this deep.
Oh, I I thought you were talking about the the soccer field. You're talking about the playground.
Yeah.
Okay, I I will go look at that. I'm sorry.
Massive holes and it's it's scary because there's a number of kids that are playing in it every day and watching them drop. Just waiting for an ankle to break.
Okay, I I apologize. I'll get on that.
But I was worried about soccer fields too.
Yeah, most people email me. I was like, the kids' ankles are gonna break. I'm like, oh, the field is horrible.
Thank you. Any other board members? Community members? Um, community member Patrick Watson, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Councilmember Tupola for all of your hard work. I see you all over the place, all over the news. I really appreciate. All of the stuff you do and um, you had to follow up on the um. The Makakilo Extension Drive conversation. So is Grace Pacific the only entity that currently has access and the right to use that road up to the Pu'eonani?
Yes, as far as I know, yes.
So they basically control that access and so what? How difficult do you think it would be to get them to sign off on what you just mentioned, like? Give us access to the gate in case of emergency so that people can exit, you know, because there was a fire. Um, recently, I think it was, shoot, when was it? Oh, September fifth. Up in that area, the Makakilo foothills, right above the quarry area. Cause I called it into uh, nine one one and apparently a lot of people did because it was, you know, uh, they were overwhelmed by calls. But the wind happened to be blowing uh, not trade winds, opposite direction that day. So it was blowing kind of toward Waipahu. And I was just thinking to myself, you know, this is the perfect example. Had it been hu- heavy trade winds blowing toward the other way. There would have been the one event that cuts off Makakilo from the rest of the world and no way out. So um, given the fact that Lahaina has been such a heavy thing on everybody's mind, I think this might be a really good time to strike. Especially given the fact that Grace Pacific is asking the community for permission to extend their permits. So.
What? To answer your question, in two thousand and one, they could, they condemned for, they built four access roads and one of them, they condemned the property because a private property owned it. And the city condemned it and now the city owns it. So it's not like they haven't done it with a private property owner where they said. We're gonna use the road. We know it's your road. Can we have a key? You have a key. So all four property owners still have a key. And the city has a key for the access road. So I think it could be the same situation where they could condemn the area, but. The private property owner is still able to access it, but in an emergency, the city is able to as well. So I mean, I I've seen it happen, but I think we've never kind of toyed with that idea and I think we need to kind of press along that because that could be a more immediate solution.
Thank you. Mahalo.
Thank you. Um, any other community members?
That.
Case, we can, Chair recognize if that's great, for that. Thanks.
Thank you. I will be brief. Um, I happen to live right next door to Grace Pacific's properties, right here outside my window. I can't see it only because it's dark, but uh, Pueo Nani Street is too narrow to make it a thorough fair. Uh, it's a one lane in each direction with with only parking on one side. It's not even wide enough to allow parking on both sides of the street. Uh, so that's one roadblock, why we can't use Pueo Nani. And the other problem is that the road that goes from my end of of Pueo Nani Street here. Down to the north-south interchange, I believe it's called Polihua Road. Polihua is in several different sections. Anyway, uh, it's too steep. Um, there it's done by a percentage and the percentage of the grade is just too high. Uh, you can't turn that road into a, you know, a regular uh, road that would be open to the public. Grace Pacific can use it for their trucks and and whatever. I guess they can make it work, but it's too steep to be a uh. Regular road. Any extension has to come from the current end of Makakilo Drive further on down the hill. Thanks.
Thanks, Doug, for the report back. Appreciate the work. Again, council member, and I'll thank you again for the thorough report and helping our community succeed. Thank you. Okay, gang. Now let's go on to state monthly reports, starting with Congressman Ed Casey's offices on the Nestor online. In that seeing Uncle Nestor with Congressman Ed Casey's office, we go to Jill Tupola's representative, Congresswoman's representatives. Are they online?
Hi, yes. Uh, good evening, Chair, uh, members of the board. I'll keep this brief. I submitted a um. Written monthly report, so hopefully you all have that. Um, just a couple of things to highlight. Uh, we are accepting uh, nominations, military academy nominations. The deadline is October sixteen, so we uh, encourage students to who are interested to apply for that. Uh, we also recently launched a congressional um, app challenge. And so uh, we are also doing some outreach on that and also encourage interested students uh, to look into that as well. Um, we have a number of town halls and uh, what we're calling satellite office hours. uh what we're calling satellite office hours scheduled. Um, satellite office hours is something that uh we're doing to go out into the community um for people who might need help with a federal agency. Um, you know, we know it's not always easy for people to um, you know, get to a computer or call on the phone, or sometimes they just want to talk to someone face to face. So uh, we have a number of those listed on the monthly newsletter. One of them on Oahu that's coming up is in uh YNI on October twenty eight. And other than that, you know, the main thing I think that's on everyone's minds right now is um potential for government shutdown. So that's um kind of what we're focused on right now. Um, you know, thinking about the kinds of services that people are going to need and seeing, you know, what might still be um available, what's going to shut down. And so that's kind of what we're uh focused on for the immediate future. And thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Um, thank you. Are there any questions or concerns from fellow board members? Any questions or concerns from the community at large? Hearing none. Um, the only thing is to reiterate, I'm not sure if Uncle Nestor got back to you uh with Congressman Jill Tukuda's office to ask about the resources, if any, are available for all of the lands still under federal control and the Kalailoa area that has not been transferred to the state or to the city as of yet. So they're in limbo still in the hands of the federal government because the state or the city has not actually received them. Um, are there any resources a- available for wildfire mitigation or brush control? That would be greatly appreciated if you could follow up with that.
Okay, I'll take that back and I'll consult with Representative Case's office as well. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Mahalo for the report. Appreciate your time. Okay, now let's go to Governor Josh Green's representative. Is Uncle Gordon Pang online? Oh, yes, he is. Aloha, welcome.
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes, sound great.
Okay, great. Hello, board members and fellow West Oahu residents. I'm Gordon Pang, Housing Information Officer for the Hoi Housing Finance and Development Corporation and the representative for this board from the office of the governor. Uh, my apologies for not attending uh last month's meeting as we were all pedal to the metal trying to support whatever efforts we could to assist those folks affected by the uh tragic fires on Maui. Um, I have some links to FEMA State and Maui County websites where you can find ways to help our neighbors on the Valley Isle. You can find them on our HHFDC website, dbet.hawaii.gov slash HHFDC. Um, as for the concerns raised about the blessings for the two new developments, um, first of all, I don't know anything about the fuel storage facility project, but I see that you folks are gonna vote on a resol later this evening addressed to the military. I think that would probably be your best bet. Um, now regarding the Parkway Village project, I do know a little bit about that project. So, okay, just to be clear, you're saying that the developer did not come before the board? Is that correct? Am I hearing that correctly?
Yes, as far as we know, they they have not come at least during our tenure. So they may have come years ago. But if they came years ago and the plans have changed, then they should have came for an update, which we haven't received. So we're just checking in. Most of us, even the veterans of the board have have not remembered the village Parkway coming before them.
Yeah, Cuny, that Dr. Cuny Dudley does not remember this project ever coming before the board.
Thank you for clarifying that. Well, I can tell you this is a private development. The leads are the Kobayashi Group and uh the Ahe Group. And yes, they did receive entitlements and land from the city for this project as well as financing from HHFDC, the agency I work for. Uh, this project involves four hundred units of studios to three bedrooms and includes six classrooms for pre-K or preschool operators. Um, quite honestly, I'm not sure why the neighborhood board wasn't notified. Um, I will try to find out why and try to get the developer to reach out to the chair and perhaps set something up. That's uh what I can tell you about that. I can answer some questions about it if you want. Um, finally, I have no formal report for you this month, but I'll be happy to take down any concerns and try to get you some responses as usual. Thank you.
Thank you for the report, Uncle Gordon, for the Governor Josh Green. Any concerns or questions from fellow board members? Any questions or concerns from the community at large? And Uncle Gordon, thank you. Uh, please do reach out to the Kobayashi Group or whoever else you believe is necessary to put in contact because we would appreciate an update. And that'll be really helpful. Thank you. Particularly since we got land and entitlements from the city and funding from HHFDC. So they're being funded by taxpayer dollars and we didn't know about it.
Understood.
Okay. Mahalo, Nui Loa. Appreciate your diligence and looking forward to a favorable report. Let's now go to Highways Division. Are they available online? Not seeing Highways Division at this time. Uh, is Senator Mike Gabbard represented by Yanavi or someone else online? Not hearing that. What about Senator Mylishima Bokoro's office with Patrice or some other representative? She's not available at the moment. So now we get to our state rep- um Representative Diamond Garcia, who's here with us in person. Mahalo, welcome.
I'll be quick because I may get a few presentations on the agenda. Oh, I got these.
Thank you.
I was wondering where it was.
Their packets. Okay, first things first, uh tomorrow evening at Honuuli Middle School, the House Minority Caucus will be there for our listening tour. It's a new program we're doing. We're going out to the various communities statewide to hear from the residents. And we're going to be crafting our minority caucus package based upon the results and the um suggestions we get from the community because we truly believe that for a long time, lots of the packages at the state capital don't really reflect the views and concerns of Hoi's residents. So once again, tomorrow evening, the Listening Tour at Honuuli Middle School at five o'clock, there'll be some food vendors, some westside food vendors, some live music, and then we want to talk story and hear from the West Oahu community. So if you're free, please join us. Um, the State House formed some working groups, some bipartisan working groups to address what happened in Lahaina. And so there were six groups formed. I currently sit on the Food, Water and Other Supplies Group. And we're tasked with focusing on assessing the availability of temporary and transitional shelters for displaced individuals and their families. And our group's mission is to to develop uh recommendations for necessary action uh this coming session through legislation. Um, a few other things, uh Inspired Church Kapolei has moved out to to West Oahu. There is a groundbreaking ceremony, I think it was uh two weeks ago uh in Campbell Industrial. And so they bought some property out there and they'll be expanding and they have begun they have started their construction. Um, Rep Tukuda's office mentioned the Congressional App Challenge. Uh, just FYI, for for the last two years in a row, Dream House Public Charter School of West Oahu won first place for two years in a row nationwide. So that's a cool thing. So hopefully they're in there again. Um, second handout in your packet was a letter from the governor to my office. He released two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the financing of a TOD feasibility study for non-campus university district lands adjacent to UH West Oahu. And the third handout basically gives you that TOD study. This is the most recent from twenty twenty-two. Um, on the second page, you'll see the left three bold dots. Those are the rail stations in our district. The the second one there in the middle, Keonei Rail Station, that is the rail station where the lands are adjacent to UH West Oahu. So this funding is going to be studying what can we build in that area, whether it be um entertainment, um shopping things, things that's uh relating to the school nearby, et cetera. So that's for you guys to read. That's pretty much it for my handout, for my my report this month. Any questions from the board?
Thank you, Representative, for being here with us this evening. Appreciate your report. Are there any questions or concerns from fellow board members? Any questions or concerns from the community at large? And uh, thank you so much, particularly to the minority caucus for going out into the community to hearing their concerns. So I appreciate that. Okay, um, I believe Senator Mike Gabbard's representative is online. Yanavi, you ready now?
Uh, we can't hear you.
Sorry. Can you try unmuting yourself or changing your microphone?
Yeah, it says that you're uh not muted, but he's not picking up any microphone, but.
We'll give you a few more seconds. Um, and try and check it out. Yeah, we can still hear you, Yanavi, um, but if you can hear us, uh, we'll go through a couple more reports and come right back to you. So if you wanted to reboot your computer or try something else, you'll have some time. So let's now go to Representatives, um, Tomani Suzo. Is she or representative online?
Uh, she was online earlier. I think we dropped. I think her report in the chat.
Okay, so now uh is State Representative Darius Kilo or representative online? Hearing none, let's go to now the Hoi Community Development Authority, HCD.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you. Aloha, welcome.
Thank you. This is Francine Murray from the Hoi Community Development Authority. I'll share our newsletter in the chat. Uh, our next HCD authority meetings are gonna be next Wednesday, October fourth. We'll have a Kalailoa meeting at eleven AM. The agendas and meeting packet will be posted tomorrow. That's pretty much it. Do you have any questions for me to take back to the office?
Aloha, thank you, um, Francine Murray for the report. Any questions or concerns from fellow board members for HCD? Any questions or concerns from the community at large? Um, we have one here in person and um.
I'm sorry, I know it's getting late.
No problem. Go right ahead.
Okay, aloha. Um, HCD, just to let you folks know that we are NHL requested to help in the stewardship of the um Akoko out there. It's on currently on unallocated lands. Um, apparently we're told that everybody doesn't don't want it because it's so much hassle, plus with the um the contamination. We've also stepped forward to look through um meet certain means to include means international through the UN Sustainability and CBD, um all of those avenues to clean up the contamination of Ordi Pan which is uh, you know, is it is it's being used by endangered species as well. So um uh, we did a presentation and they were really welcoming. But this is for the record, before the main concern against it um from were from two certain people. Um, not in a bad way, but they're concerned with capacity on their end. And so my reply was, well, that's why the community is stepping forward because we care. So we want to, you know, because once who knows if that land goes somewhere, we don't know what's going to happen to it. You just kick the can down the road and it's Ordi Pan going to continue to be contaminated. So yep, just stating that for the record and hopefully we can partner. Thank you.
Mahalo, community member.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, was his was that Ulukoa?
Yeah, aloha. How's it?
Hi, hi. Okay, thank you. I got your message. I'll relay it.
Thank you.
Office. Thank you.
Uh, Chair recognizes board member Michaela Lindstrom.
Mahalo, Francine, if you can take that back to your people um from Pumu, Ulukoa, the Akoko and and all of our unique species that are unique to Kalailoa. Capacity um concern should not be an excuse for preserving what's unique to Kalailoa. We we need to make an effort. Um, HCD should have the means to to make an effort to preserve what's unique to Kalailoa. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Awesome. Any other questions or concerns from the fellow board members or the community at large? Hearing none. Um, the last thing I will leave you with, Francine, is if you could reach out and coordinate with Congressman Ed Case and Congresswoman Jill Tukuda's office on resources um from the federal side uh with lands that are still under their jurisdiction that haven't been transferred because you are the regional planner for uh the state and county entities. Um, maybe um coordinating with them to see what we can get in order to help out with the wildfire management.
Thank you. I will.
Awesome. Hearing none, let's now go back to uh Yanavi Pomerats with Senator Mike Gabbard's office and see if uh we resolved the audio concern.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, awesome. You did. We can hear you.
Okay, great. So aloha, obviously I'm not Janavi for those that know Janavi. My name is Nanook Denny and I'm Senator Gabbard's new legislative aid and community liaison, and I'm really happy to be here. So sadly, Janavi decided to move on to work on her jewelry business full time, so we wish her well. Um, Senator Gabbard would like to invite you to this next Listen Story Community Meeting on Saturday, November fourth from nine AM to ten AM. Uh, the location is still to be determined, so you can contact us for that. Um, last Saturday, joining us was special guest speaker Tony Gaston with Hunt Companies who gave an informative update on Kala Leo Roads and District Twenty-One Development. Um, following Tony's presentation, Senator Gabbard gave some brief community updates. Um, if you can't make the meeting in person, you also have the option to attend virtually and you can email me or call the office for a link to the Zoom meeting. Um, you can also view past recordings or Listen Story meetings on the Senator's YouTube channel, and I'll drop that in the chat after. Uh, I also put the September newsletter in the chat where you can access the link and his contact information. Uh, that's the report. That's Senator's report for tonight, and I'm happy to take back any questions to him.
Mahalo for um the report. And could you do us a favor and introduce yourself again, please?
Sure, my name is Nanook Denny. Nanook Denny.
Okay, thank you so much. And uh we appreciate hearing about Yanavi Pomerats um next adventure in her life and we wish her well and we appreciate that you're here with us this evening. Thank you. Are there any questions or concerns for Senator Gabbard's office from fellow board members or the community at large? Here, Arsenan, thank you so much and we appreciate the report. Mahalo. Okay, so now let's do one round to check if any of the previous reporters um have not that have not spoken this evening that wish to speak. Anyone from city or state or federal government agencies that wish to speak that haven't spoken yet? Great. Hearing none, we're now going to the presentation portion of our agenda which could have been much earlier if we had followed the uh advice of Secretary.
Mahalo.
But at this time, we'd like to welcome up um the PBR Hoi or representatives on the Kapolei Mixed Use Development Affordable Housing Project.
Yes, hi Chair, I'm Sunny and we have in-person presenters there today, so I will yield uh my time to them.
So um are you online, but I control the WebEx presentation for us?
No, uh, yes, we have uh someone controlling it for us. Are you all able to see it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's ringing. It's boopering, no worries.
Oh, is it um? Was it a taste of the net or?
It's just not ringing.
It's not ringing, no problem. Okay, the presentation is up and please, you're live, so please introduce yourselves and take it away.
Aloha, Chair Paris, uh, neighborhood board members. Um, mahalo for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name's Chris. Mahalo for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name's Chris Duker. I'm the managing principal with Forum Partners. We are one of the development partners with High Ridge Costa and the Ahead Foundation. And I want to introduce Scott Settle to my right, who's with the Ahead Foundation, and Emily Davis, who's part of our team. We're here tonight to share our plans for Halemauana, Halemauana Phase Three and Four. Obviously, looking at the screen, I think everybody in the community knows this project well. Phase One and Two are affordable housing that was finished a couple of years ago, has been very successful. When you look at this photo, you can see the grassy area in the foreground and just to the right. These are the areas that we're looking at developing Phase Three and Four. We're gonna share a little bit about that tonight. I'll go relatively quickly, just understanding everyone's delayed hours. So next slide, please. So a little bit about High Ridge Costa. High Ridge Costa is the main development partner. Mo Mohana is the president of the company. I think many of you met before and know. They're a great, incredible company, very honored to be partnered with them. Mo wanted to be here tonight, wasn't able to because he had a family gathering outside of the country. But a little bit about High Ridge Costa, they're one of the nation's leading affordable housing developers. The mission statement for them is really changing lives. That's what it means. This isn't so much about providing apartment units. It's really about the opportunity to change the lives of the people and the families that live in these units. They've developed, you can see in blue there across the United States, and are really focused on helping us all here in Hawaii build more affordable housing. Next slide. Forum Partners, again, I'm one of the development partners, local developer Ben Ben here in Honolulu. I grew up here doing development for over 25 years. I've primarily worked in market housing, but have really, the rest of my career, dedicated myself to focusing on building affordable housing. Next slide. I want to turn it over to Scott to tell you a little bit about our nonprofit partner Ahead Foundation.
Aloha, Scott Settle, chairman of the Affordable Housing and Economic Development Foundation, Ahead for short. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that's dedicated to preserving and increasing the housing's affordable housing stock in Hawaii. We've worked with Forum Partners, High Ridge Costa, Ahit Group, some of the other folks that you've you've heard in the affordable housing industry. I've been in the affordable housing industry for over 30 years and have a mission to to build as much and and preserve as much affordable housing in Hawaii as possible. I'm very pleased to be working with a good group of folks that understand developing low-income housing and 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 for the long term, holding it. And there's a there's a very, it's a very difficult type of project to build because it's very difficult to finance. And and working with folks that have done it across the country and and who can build it like Chris is very, very important because getting the funding to do these projects is very difficult. So very pleased to be working with them, and we also try to bring in other types of financing to these projects, whether it be grants or city city grants or federal grants that are only available to nonprofits. We try to help bring those last bits of financing into these projects as well. Thank you.
Mahalo, Scott. So just real quick, before we get into the project, our commitment to Hawaii, in addition to this project, we're gonna share with you here momentarily. We're working on a project in Waipahu with command ma schools. We have a project in the Salt Lake community. We're gonna build 191 units there. Kakuahali is a building that's in downtown Honolulu, right across from Pacific Honda. That's for Kapuna. That one is finishing construction right now, 224 units. We're working with the State of Hawaii and H H F D C on Pohokaina Commons, which is where the Fisher Building is in Kakaako. We're also working at Pahoa Ridge, which is kind of near on Waiwi Avenue, near the University of Hawaii. We have a partnership with Parker Ranch. We're building some affordable housing for them on the Big Island. And then we also have a couple of projects on Maui, and obviously, we're looking to do more in light of what's happened recently with the fires. All total, it's about 3,000 units that we're focused on building over the next five to 10 years. Excellent. So why is it so important? I think I'll go quickly here. We all know how hard it is to to afford a home in Hawaii. You know, we need up to 50,000 new homes in the next five to 10 years. Fifty percent of our families at 80% AMI can't afford to buy a home or to buy a condominium. And it takes about 23 and a half years for somebody at that income level to save up for a down payment. So how do we do that? We need affordable rentals, and we need as much as we can build in the coming years. So what do we love about this site and this community? Obviously, you all live here. You know what a great place it is to be. We think, you know, affordability really belongs here and makes sense here. The first two phases of Halemauana, we did the Kapuna Housing, which is on the right, the Malka side. We've had 154 units. Those are full. We have a waiting list that's approximately seven years. Halemauana, the Ohana, which is on the left side there, the Makai kind of EVA side. We have 143 Ohana family homes. We were just there last week, lots of kids, kids in the community, and it's really incredible to see the demand. You know, we had, we stopped at the waiting list at 999 people just because that's how pent up it is. Most of the people that are living here are coming from within the community, from the west side. And so we're excited about the ability to provide more housing here. Next slide. So one of the things it takes, a huge team. It's not just our development team. We bring on a whole litany of experts from the contractor to our planners, our property managers, our attorneys, everyone, but it's it's the team that we work with is working with us across the state. They're all motivated to provide more affordable housing. So what our plan is, Phase Three of Halemauana is to do another Kapuna affordable homes. We're looking at doing 122 units. That's what you see on the left side here, which is the Makai side that would go first. This wraps the parking garage. Phase Four will be 126 affordable Ohana. And again, these are anywhere from studios to three bedrooms. Parking, we're adding additional parking, and we're also tying into the existing parking structure. One of the things we're doing here that's a little bit unique with these two phases is we're adding a lot more amenities. And I mentioned before, we have a lot of kids that are in the Ohana areas, and we want to provide them with some more outdoor space. I'll share a little bit more with you here shortly on those. So I apologize, this slide's a little bit tough to read, but if you look on the up, the top side and the left side is sort of the existing Phase One and Two. We are gonna add the ground floor, some amenities and different common areas. One of the things I want to mention, too, is on the top and on the left, those colored areas, those were originally designed to be retail. They've been vacant since the project's been done. We have not been able to lease them. It's been a real struggle. So one of the things we want to do, we want to activate the street. We want to have some 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 things happening there from a public safety and eyes on the street standpoint. And we also want to have more common areas, so we're gonna convert those areas to space for our Kapuna and for the families there. Community rooms, we're gonna add a fitness center. We're also the areas that are designated in purple. We're actually working with the residents in the community to identify the things that they want to have in there, and we're gonna provide those as part of Phase Three and Four. Next slide. This is kind of Level One, amenity areas. There's a little bit of parking on the right side that's in blue there. Again, I'll go quickly. Next slide. This is going up. The second level will be parking that ties into the existing parking structure. Next slide. Then you can see here on the Kapuna building, on the third level, we actually start to have residence units while we're still parking under the family side. That's kind of driven by the fact that the Ohana needs a bit more parking than the seniors. Next slide. Levels five through 10 is the typical floor plan heading up. Next slide, we'll show you an elevation here. So this is looking, if you went to the right is where Farrington is. This is looking sort of EVA, if you will. And what's interesting about this is both phases are gonna tie into that ground floor entry level at the corner to kind of activate that. And again, on the left is the Kapuna, on the right is the Ohana. Excellent. This is kind of elevation-wise, we've been working with Campbell and the design group to have sort of the same architectural themes and fabric, but slightly different colors because we want to break up the styling of the building. Next slide. Here's something to the kids. We had a town hall meeting with the residents a couple of weeks ago, and obviously, the kids, it was like Christmas Day when we shared the the plan for the pool and the barbecue area. Adjacent to that, too, where you see the windows, we have a community room that will spill out into that. This will be used by all of the residents within all four buildings, so it's a shared amenity. Next slide. Here's the opposite corner, sort of the Malka side right behind like brick, brick oven pizza. Right now, it's vacant. We're gonna activate it, create a dog park. We're gonna have a kid's play area, sort of an outdoor dining area, and then again, within those two windows, you see their doors. There's an interior community room. Next slide. That kind of gives you an idea. We're gonna have a kitchen, the community room. There'll be a study area for the kids and sort of, you know, place to have parties. So next slide. Here's kind of a, you know, a quick rendering of the fitness center area that's gonna be on the Malka side, right behind the the pet hospital there. So. So this gives you community context. You can see the two buildings that are there now. Next slide shows the the addition of the Phase Three and Four. Next slide, showing from the other angle. Just the context there. Our residents, you know, we're targeting, we're gonna be 60% AMI and below. So we'll have 10% of the units will go down to 30% AMI, 10% will be at 50%, and the remaining 80 or 60% are under. You know, who are our residents? They're retail workers, you know, preschool teachers, waiters and waitresses, mechanics. I mean, really, you know, are working people here in Honolulu, so sorely needed housing. Next slide. Our rents, they're established by HUD and H H F D C. These are set. They'll run anywhere again from the 30% AMI on a studio, $687 a month, to a three-bedroom unit that is at the 60% AMI, goes up to about $2,000 a month.
Is that really that's set?
Pardon? Those are set, those are set by the state and.
And they they can be revised in every year.
Every year.
In March or so, I would decide, has the median income increased or decreased, then they'll reset.
Also, utility allowance that offsets this as well, too, so can't go above that.
Yeah, they're mandated, which is really, that's why this housing, you know, Scott had mentioned earlier, this housing is very, very difficult to build in many ways, just because of the financing it takes. It takes a long time to get these projects, you know, kind of off the ground, but, you know, they're sorely needed. And it's very competitive. For every application that goes into H H F D C, it's about four to one. One project out of every four gets an allocation, so. Next slide. So next steps for us, you know, as I mentioned, we had a town hall meeting with our residents. We've been doing, you know, kind of outreach to some of our councilmember, Tapola, some of the legislators, and just for sort of getting the word out, we wanted to come and share this all with you. We are submitting for our initial 201H permits to H H F D C. At the end of this week, we hope, might be next week. And then we're gonna continue to do, you know, community meetings, stakeholders. We're also meeting more and more with the tenants. And then our hope is it will be in front of H H F D C Board in December. If they like the project and it moves forward, then we'll be in front of City Council, probably in December, January. And then we'll be submitting for a Litech application in February. Hopefully, we get an award Q3 of 2024. If we get permits and all goes well, we would start construction in fourth quarter 2026, so. Got our fingers crossed on getting our approval and getting our financing award. So. With that, we'll take any questions or?
Mahalo for the presentation. Are there any questions or concerns from fellow board members? Chair recognizes board member Amy Bosler.
Thank you. You said dog park twice. I just wanted wanted to make sure these are kind of friendly living?
Okay. Yes.
I mean, it seems logical, but it's not always.
Yeah. Now, that's one of the things. It was, you know, we have a lot of pet owners and they, you know, they're out walking their dog in the street. We want to have an area for them to go and have a bark park and a dog wash.
Chair recognizes Secretary Michaela Lindstrom.
No A C, right?
Actually, the first two buildings do not have air conditioning.
Yeah.
We are looking at the next two buildings to have air conditioning.
Good. You need A C over here. And I know the first two buildings A C is really taking a toll on the residents.
We're looking at maybe if there's some ways we can improve it so that they're not having the temporary ones hanging out the windows.
Yeah, because I think that's taking a toll on the residents a little bit, too. Word of mouth is kind of gold here, so I've been hearing some stuff. And I have, I've heard some some stuff, and I and I think the shared facilities, too, it's it's and then the A C, it just, we live in the desert.
Yeah.
It just takes a toll. A C is, it does wonders.
Well, actually, we're looking at this, too, as an opportunity to improve all of the kind of things that come up. But A C, there's some other, there's some other design elements as well that we're looking to improve that we've been hearing from the tenants. And so these next two phases will pick those things up.
Yeah, thank you. Um. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns from fellow board members? Chair recognizes board member Tia Lintolom.
Hello, thank you for your presentation. As an architecture aficionado, I appreciate your efforts to stay within the design continuity of the existing area. At the same time, I was wondering if there are any, if there was any room in that in those design guidelines to kind of be more innovative. The the part of what I'm hearing and part of what I'm seeing, again, with my experience in architecture, is that the building itself is a very kind of stagnant space. It's very hardscaped. You know what I mean? The the color choices, again, kind of lend towards the desert reminder, reminders of the desert. I'm wondering if there's any discussions and then within the the design aesthetic team about softening some of the hard lines, using vertical gardens, trying to introduce more greenery, not just within the inner spaces of for the residents, but also for, you know, the street goers and things like that. This is a very lightweight question. But I'm just wondering on behalf of some of the residents I know there.
And Mahalo for your question. That's a great one. I can tell you, we've looked at the architecture quite a bit. You know, we also have to, we are also working under the design guidelines for Kapala. And so there is some limitations about what we can, or I shouldn't say limitations, but we're adhering to those design guidelines. I would say that one of the things we're trying to do is activate some of those corners with, you know, some more green space, hence the park and the dog park and the play area. We want to landscape those. You know, with a site like this, we don't have a lot of open space, right? So it is a little more challenging to try and create, sort of breaking up that ground floor level. But in terms of the architectural, the the look and the feel of it, you know, we'll have to, I will have to go back and take a look at that. And I know that, you know, our architects that did a great deal of work with the Campbell Association, I'm sorry, the the design guidelines for Kapala, so we'll have to take a look at that.
Yeah, I'm seeing some of your other projects, and those are kind of more beautiful than what we got going on here, so. I'd like to see.
Actually, I. Okay.
Thank you, board member Tia Lintolom. Any other questions or concerns for fellow board members? Chair recognizes member Amy Bosler.
Just to pick up on what our other board member had just talked about the A C. Are you saying that you're considering putting A C in the first?
No, no, we're looking.
Because my concern is you put, you have two buildings and it's fairly hot. And but we do have breezes, so thank thank goodness for those. But if you put two blocks, any breezes that they might be getting are gonna have this big block in the way. And and these, the ones that are the block, would be, they're having A C. So that's what I'm just, I'm just concerned if about all of those units, if they're already.
For the for the better, well.
Yeah.
We're not looking at adding A C. We're looking at if we can possibly make the windows where the tenants can put their A C directly out versus the, you know, right now, there's a situation where they're kind of opening up the window. It's not very efficient or, you know, it's just not good from a green standpoint. In terms of, one of the things we did study, though, is about the the flow of the wind through there. What happens actually is when we get towers, you know, these buildings that are close like that, sometimes the wind actually picks up through there, which helps create, you know, kind of a better breeze wave, which is one of the arguments we had from one of our engineers. He says, oh, I don't think you need to add A C in the new phases, but we're sort of like, well, you want to live there without it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what.
Well, yeah.
It's hot now in Hawaii all over.
Are there solar panels or anything to help offset the cost of electricity for those units with the A C? Because I'm just thinking, we don't have A C in our. units with the AC? Cause I'm just thinking, we don't have AC in our house because, partly because we can't afford it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we electrically, we're, we're going to submeter the units electrically. Uh, we do that because we want to motivate everyone to be more conscious of their, you know, cost, right? If it's free, then everyone's just going to crank it all the time or leave their windows open. So we want to submeter. Uh, we do have solar. Right now, if you notice over the parking garage, we have solar. Some of that is going to get relocated due to the new buildings. And we're also looking at putting solar on top of the two new buildings as well.
Are there any questions or concerns from the community at large? The chair recognizes meeting member Patrick Watson.
Hello, chair. And, uh, aloha Scott, how are you doing? Just wanted to shout out aloha and thank you for all the work you folks are doing. Um, yeah, it's really important to create affordable housing for everybody. And so I just wanted to, um, ask, is there a website or someplace that we can kind of track these projects collectively? Cause, uh, some of the areas you folks are working in, Pohokaina and such are areas that uh, our company is involved in as well downtown. So, um, is there a, a website that somebody can put in the chat where we can find more information about your projects?
Uh, that, that's a great question. We've been having that discussion internally. We're a little bit dispersed. Some of our projects have their own websites like Pohokaina as an example, and Pohola Ridge. Um, and then some of them are on High Ridge Costa's website, and I think some of them on our foreign partner's website. So, um, we don't have them all in one spot yet. We are actually working to do that. We've, we've just been so busy, uh, trying to get these going that we haven't had time yet. But, um, I think from a link standpoint, we can probably provide, we can provide several links, I think, um, to the ones that we do have and the ones that we don't, you know, we'll continue to add them and, and make them accessible from our company websites.
Okay, appreciate that. Yeah, you folks are super busy. I can see. All right. Mahalo. Thank you.
Thank you. Mahalo. Any other questions or concerns from the community at large? Okay, um, with that, um, a few remarks from the chair. The first is mahalo nui loa for doing affordable housing at the sixty to eighty percent AMI line. That is much needed, especially for rentals. And thank you for doing work out here in our neighborhoods. To echo and amplify a couple of comments earlier, if you could look at the design particularly for vertical gardens or rooftop gardening, because that is quite helpful. Um, especially as the design element, um, in order to reduce ambient temperature costs. For air conditioning for units. And, um, also if you're doing so- solar panels, um, if you re- relocating them, consider rooftop gardens or vertical gardens as well. But in those gardens in specific, I'll encourage you to look at the list if you don't already for the landscaping to use natives. To save on water, um, because they're already drought tolerant. And also, um, there's at least one native land organization that's willing to work with a ko'opu, which is an endangered species that lives in your area. But it actually lives everywhere in this area, but we're paved over it. So that's the reason why there is, um, this currently from the United States Fish and Wildlife Services, it will never get to the genetic population where it will not be off of the genetic, um, the endangered species list. And the only way that we can actually get it off is if we partner with all of the new developments for them to incorporate it into their landscape.
Oh.
So hopefully, um, this is something that you'd be interested in doing, because if it is, we would definitely probably consider more likely supporting the project.
Yeah.
Through the different areas. And the one thing that I've heard from other developers is that is that they're really concerned about handling of endangered species because of the protections. And, uh, we have made some inroads with the United Fish and Wildlife Service to actually provide for an exemption for those that might do it as a landscaping effort because of the fact that their own study says that there's no, there's no, no needs to by which to get it off of the endangered species list. So there's a potential pathway forward if you're, if you're interested in using that.
Yeah, no, I think I'd be very interested. And, and actually too, and I didn't mention it, uh, between phase one and two, there is a portion, there's a connecting sort of amenity deck that's up there. And there is some garden areas that we have, uh, for the tenants, uh, the residents that are there. So maybe that's an area we could, we could place some of this too.
Awesome. Great. And continue with the work. And all I can say is that please come back and visit or send someone because we'd love to, um, help get this affordable housing done for them and be of help.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely keep you updated and posted as, as we progress.
Mahalo nui loa, thank you. Any questions for us or anything we can do for your consideration?
No, I just, i- if, if anything ever comes up or you hear anything, please let us know and, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll work to address it and do what we can.
Thank you.
More faster is all what I've.
Yeah. Wow, it's, yeah, it takes time, but you know, once it's up, you know, we got a lot of families and we got a lot of seniors living there, so.
Thank you so much for your, your good work. Appreciate it.
Mahalo.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, now let's go to the next presentation of the evening. Welcome up. Mr. Mike Ewell, S wire, talking trash. Aloha. And we can navigate for you online or, or would you want to navigate yourselves?
Um, I figure I'd make it easier since I was inspired by them to do the same.
Sounds good. Welcome.
Thank you so much. So thank you so much for having me. Um, let me make sure this is working. Should I be using my own microphone or just speaking loudly? So it comes through whatever microphones you have?
Sure. You can try your own. It's no problem.
Should I? Okay.
Much better online now.
It's better to use that one?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Next time we move over or?
Over, I think that.
Yeah. Yeah. One more seat over.
Okay. Awesome.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, so, um, let me clear out the screen sharing first.
Thank you, Mike. Maybe if we make it work at about nine fifteen, the AC gets noisy.
Yeah.
It's noisy about this time last night.
Yeah. And Cheryl will know for the record that we would like to see if the, the AC cannot kick in at nine fifteen and leave something noisy.
Yeah, I feel like the last time when we were here, it got a little noisy about this time as well.
Okay.
With that, welcome, Mike.
Thank you.
It's yours.
Um, so my name is Mike Ewell. I'm, um, with, I'm a group called Beyond Burning. That's just getting started, but I've spent the last, um, twenty-some years with Energy Justice Network, um, a group I founded and directed. And, um, we've been involved in these issues for about thirty years, um, in waste and energy issues. And have been involved here in Hawaii since twenty fifteen, when they first brought me to the big island to help stop a proposed incinerator. And more recently with issues on this island and statewide. I've been working with the Clean Power Task Force and Kukuna Aina, two new groups that started, um, following my last visit, um, to the islands, um, that summer. And been working closely on just addressing these issues statewide. So I'm co- I come here as a resource to you and also just knowing that I'm new to some of the local specifics. So, um, here also to learn and not just to teach and hopefully this, um, could be something where you see things that need to be corrected, please be correcting me as well as I'm happy to share what I've learned from these issues across the country. So let me just get this moving here. Okay, so, um, you're obviously very familiar with this. I got a nice shot out my window as I was flying in a couple of days ago, so I'm like, I have to get that, but it's just too good. Um, so I've been keeping track of a number of the issues, um, across the state and particularly here in Oahu, um, as you're very familiar, um, they seem to want to concentrate every bad idea in Campbell Industrial Park. Uh, so I've been very focused on the incinerator, Cabanta. I've been working against that company across the whole country and numerous states. Very familiar with their track record, um, somewhat here and also in many other communities. And so that's a large part of my focus, but also the connection between that and the landfills where their ash goes. Um, also the PBT construction demolition wastelandfill, having worked a lot on those issues and understanding the alternatives to that. And below that line, I put, there are a number of proposals that I've been starting to track since the last year. Um, some of which you may be familiar with already, um, some may, um, be new to you. Just different companies that are trying to turn waste into jet fuel, um, trash into energy of various sorts, um, hydrogen proposals. A lot of things that we would consider false solutions, technologies that, um, have better alternatives that could be dangerous for the community in various ways. Um, that are largely, if they've picked a spot where they want to be, they've picked this part of the island already. Um, some of them are not that far along. Um, so I'm trying to keep track in case any of these become a real threat and are something that the community may want to organize around. And I'd like to be a resource to you, um, in that. Um, now I don't need to spend much time on these signs that you're very familiar with already. So you already know what these look like. And you're probably very familiar with this map, um, with the places that they're looking at, possible new landfill sites. Um, not surprised that some of the same places they're looking are in the same area where they already have the landfills. And that all of them are above aquifers. Um, so definitely some issues there. And while this was underway and they set a deadline of late last year, the end of last year to pick a new landfill location, I was already telling people that's not going to happen. They are not going to put a pin in the map by the end of this year. There's just no way. Any decision maker, when there's still room at the landfill is going to say, oh, this is the next community. Cause they know that they'd be skewered for just picking a place, right? So, um, it's a complicated issue. There're land, there needs to be a landfill somewhere. I'm not taking the position of where it should be, whether it should stay here, whether it should be anywhere else. That is nothing that anyone wants to take a position on, but I want to be a resource into wherever it ends up. What the ways to best make sure that it's the least harmful landfill it can be, whether it ends up in this area or not. And I'm not saying it should be anywhere. Obviously no one wants to live next to one, but you know, somewhere on this map it's going to have to be because there are not too many other options. So, um, another big concern is the PBT landfill having its days even more numbered. And where the construction demolition waste on the island will go, given that's such a big portion of the waste stream. And there's not been the kind of talk around mandating deconstruction of buildings instead of demolitions, so that we can avoid creating this waste stream that is feeding this landfill. Um, so that's something that we've done work in Baltimore and other places around the country. Looking at how to reduce that waste stream dramatically, creating a lot more jobs by dismantling instead of demolishing buildings. So I started to put together just some thoughts on what are the best ways to have a landfill? I don't want to be perceived as promoting landfills, not a fan of landfills, fault them plenty, um, but, um, coming from Pennsylvania, which is the number one importer of trash, we take waste from all but six states. You're one of only six states that has not sent waste to my home state. Uh, so we're very familiar with not wanting landfills or incinerators and how damaging they can be. And it's important when we're talking about citing them, of course, to try to cite them as far away from where people live. So that could be a, an argument for, you know, this is not the right place for it. Uh, but also not above aquifers is another serious consideration. And where there are aquifers, making sure you have double, if not triple liner systems. I mean, double is usually hazardous waste landfill right here. Yeah, I know in my home state of Pennsylvania, they require double liners. So they say, okay, that's great, cause that's like hazardous waste landfill. So we can put all this industrial waste in them now. They do that. Um, but even those leak, so there's no perfect landfill. They will eventually all leak, uh, which is why as much protection as you can get is important. But one of the biggest concerns I have is that the Wymanal, Wymanal go to landfill here is largely taking incinerator ash, which is much more dangerous than unburned trash. And even though trash would take up more space, the ash is that much more toxic and dangerous that I would argue that any landfill community should be saying, don't give us ash. It will maybe be bigger, but it's not the size of landfills that hurts people. It's the toxicity. And with ash, you maximize the toxicity. Now, some communities have gone to the point, some states have gone to the point of saying, we're not, we're going to ban certain materials from landfills, ban recyclables, ban clean compostables. So they can make sure that those go to the right places instead of the very, um, oh, something's moving here. Um, okay, it's jumping up. Um, the need to keep things diverted that don't belong in landfills in the first place. And then when there's organic material that goes to the landfill, like sewage sludge, for example, is one of the organic materials that doesn't belong on farm fields. It's too contaminated. So it should go to landfill, but to digest it first to make sure it's biologically stable. So that's not being gassy and stinky in a landfill. Some of the main nuisances around landfills around gases, odors, leachate. And a lot of that can be reduced, if not eliminated, by doing the right pre-processing. So not if we have to land, but we have to have something on the backend. It's going to look like a landfill in some form, but there are ways to have them be much better, much less harmful. And it involves having some of these kinds of processes in place. And there are other ways, I guess technically I won't get into it all now, but there are ways to minimize the gas formation and maximize collection. But oftentimes we're doing the opposite. They're trying to burn that gas for energy and treat it like an energy facility instead of a waste facility, which ends up mismanaging the landfill in ways you get more gas escaping into the community, which means more, not just global warming impacts, but more health impacts from the chemicals in the gas that hit the community. Um, like mer- mercury, for example. And to filter those toxic chemicals out before they're being used. Now, um, I'm probably going to breeze through some of these slides because there are too many slides to go through in ten minutes. Um, but happy to take more time if you want. Um, so on H power with incinerator, this is the third largest in the country. Um, it's actually tied for a third with a couple others that are also three thousand ton per day facilities, although it's not burning anywhere close to that. And it's actually had a problem getting enough waste, which is why you have these very perverse systems economically. It's called a put or pay clause in the contracts where they have to give them a certain amount of waste or pay as if they did. Which I think is one of the reasons why you're seeing recyclables get burned here, seeing other waste streams get burned here that don't need to be burned at all. But because they have a really bad contract with Cabanta, they have this economic incentive to do that. Otherwise they're paying twice, wants to do the right thing and wants to pay Cabanta not to use them. Now, the, there are three burners here and two of them are much older. They're actually close to thirty-four years old now. They'll be thirty-four in, in November. And these are old style burners that process what's called refuse dry fuel. So this is not normal trash. It's normal trash where they pull good acid metal usually out first. And then they burn that. And these burners are not only quite old, which I'll get into the impact of their age in a minute. But they're missing two of the four pollution control devices that most trash incinerators have. One of them is to take out or reduce the nitrogen oxide that trigger asthma attacks. They just don't have that system at all on two of the three burners. And the other one is to get the most toxic chemicals out, the mercury and dioxins. That's called a carbon injection system. They're completely missing that as well. So about two thirds of this plant is just lacking in the controls to protect the community from those exposures, especially when the winds shift and blow back toward the community instead of out to sea. The third burner, the new one that's about ten years old now, that's a, a so-called mass burn one. So they don't take things out first. They just put everything in. And that nine hundred ton per day burner, they are also somewhat outdated already, even though they're one of the youngest facilities in the country. In that if they were permitted today or anytime in the past decade, they would not be allowed to operate without stricter controls for nitrogen oxide to trigger asthma attacks. They would have a standard that's two to three times stronger or lower than what they're allowed to put out, even though they're only permitted and built about ten years ago. Now, when I last compiled the data on how they compare to other power plants on the island. And of course the coal plant AES is now shut down, but I'm sorry, that's very, so it's hard to see. But the fourth one in is the coal plant AES. And then the last one in each of those is H power incinerator. And you can see, I, I had to put different charts because some of them just have different scales, so just to make them more readable. Um, but you can see on the first one, um, hydrochloric acid just blows the others away in terms, it's just huge amount of hydrochloric acid coming out compared to even a full power plant. And this is all per unit of energy. So if they're producing the same amount, this is comparing apples to apples. You can see in the other types of pollutants like nitrogen oxide is equivalent to the oil burning plants. Um, there, there are three of still operating here. On the third chart, the toxic metals, they see lead and mercury are far in excess of most of the other ones. Um, the Kailoa or, I'm sorry, co- mispronouncing. The second one listed here, um, could Kailoa, help me out. Which one is that? Kailoa. Thank you. Kailoa, thank you so much. Um, that one has lead emissions that are quite high, but H power is second to it and is number one in mercury, um, which is far in excess of even what you have from the coal power plants. And the final one, um, the global warming pollutants, the carbon dioxide is worse than any of the. And the final one, um, the global warming pollutants, the carbon dioxide is worse than any of the fossil fuels. So for global warming, it's, it's the worst. Now. When you look at all the different things they're putting out, this is data they report to the federal government. You can see how many pounds of different pollutants they're pumping out. Um, now that the coal plant shut down last year, they're actually probably a higher rank for some of these that are there are four or five, they're probably three or four in. And you can see they're among the top five, if not number one on the island in terms of different pollutants that are being released. And I mentioned, I get back to the age. The trend in this industry is that it's closing down. So this plant is not going to be forever, um, especially these two older units. We're seeing a lot of plants close almost every year, two closed just this year already. One burned down, the other one shut down just for economic reasons. And that no one's building new ones. Very rarely Florida might get away with it, but unlikely. There's a lot of opposition to that now. Um, the trend is that no new ones are really getting built and the existing ones are just more are closing each year. We're down to sixty-six left in the country. And of the fifty that closed since year two thousand, their average age at closure was just twenty-four years old. Very rarely have they made it past their forty, fortieth birthday. And so to have two thirds of this facility at thirty-four. We're soon going to see the problem where it's not just where we get enough waste to feed this machine. It's where are we gonna have space to put our waste, because two of those three burners are going to be shut down. And to think that they'll get away with replacing them economically or based on people, most likely, probably folks in this room. Deciding that it's worth fighting, because anywhere they tried to do this, people fight it and almost every time they win. Um, so it's unlikely that they'd be getting away with building new ones here or anywhere. So. When we look at this compared to coal plants just generally across the country. We find that they're far more polluting for almost every pollutant. This is the latest EPA data, um, that we compare this from twenty eighteen. And you can see the red in uh, for incinerators versus the black um, baseline for coal plants. They're many times higher for most of these major air pollutants, even though the trash incinerators usually have more pollution control devices on them. Than the much older coal plants that are under weaker standards. And this is um, New York state. They have the most incinerators of any state. And when they last analyzed this in twenty eleven, this is the state government's data. Looking at the eight coal power plants they had at the time, all of which are now shut down versus the ten trash incinerators that are still open. And except for sulfur dioxide, every other pollutant was worse from trash incinerators per unit of energy. So comparing apples to apples here. Now. One of the biggest dangers coming out of incinerators is dioxins and furuses. The most toxic chemicals known to science. And largely come from combustion systems, especially incinerators of various sorts. And they cause all kinds of health problems. I just named some of them on the slide, but a lot of different things. And most of our exposure to them comes from eating meat and dairy products, cause it's fat soluble. Climbs up the food chain like mercury does once it hits a water body, becomes fat soluble. Dioxins are already fat soluble, so it automatically just starts accumulating in the food chain. Um, this slide here is actually from the EPA, this chart. And you can see most of the exposure routes are meat and dairy products. This alone's got me to go from vegetarian to vegan, realizing this, working on this issue as much as I do. I'm like, oh, wow, I'm eating this stuff. Okay. Really hit home for me. Um, so. This industry has a story that they tell all communities. I get calls all the time from communities in all sorts of places across the country. And I say, did they tell you this? And they're like, how did you know? That's exactly what they were saying. And they have this story that goes a little bit like this. They say, don't worry. We have continuous submissions monitors. We know what's coming out of our smokestack at all times. And the state government has this data and they will fine us if we go over those limits. And those limits means healthy and safe. So is any of that sound familiar? Have you heard of this smokestack industries? So everyone gets some version of that story. And I wanna break down that story, because a lot of this is not as well known, how they're misleading communities when they talk about this. First of all, they're not always within permit limits. Cavanta in particular is a chronic violator of permit limits. And when they do get fined, the fines are not enough to deter behavior. I've seen one of the ones they have that's close to where I live in Philadelphia. That has had routine violations in the past few years, a lot of malfunctions happening. They got fined what's considered a big fine of over two hundred thousand dollars, and that was a couple of years ago, and the same problems keep recurring. Because it wasn't enough to get them to change their behavior, which would cost a lot more than a couple of thousand, hundred thousand dollars. They. Also cannot meet modern limits. The modern limits are for nitrogen oxides that trigger asthma attacks are many times lower. And it would cost, um, in Baltimore, they estimated about sixty to ninety million dollars just to come up to modern standards at an existing plant. They cannot afford that and said they would shut down if they had to. But EPA is supposed to be upgrading these standards every five years, and they haven't done so in sixteen years. And a group had to bring them into federal court and force them to modern, to come up to modern standards by the end of this year. And that is gonna get delayed by industry lawsuits. But they're not even at modern standards, so this facility will become subject to newer standards in the next couple of years. Which alone might get them to say, well, we can't afford that. We're gonna shut down some of these units, or maybe they'll find a way to charge you more to install that. And the permit limits themselves are not based on health and safety. They are technology-based standards. And one of the ways we know this is that the permit limits are also concentration based. So if this were a five hundred ton per day trash incinerator, there'll be a certain amount of pollution they're allowed to put out. But since it's six times that size, they're allowed to put a much larger amount of pollution into your air. Because all the permits are written in parts per million or nanograms per dry standard cubic meter. It's always per something. And that's just by design. And so bigger means they get to be more polluting. And there are only three pollutants, not counting um, carbon dioxide, the global warming pollutant. That are monitored on a continuous basis. The rest they test once a year or not at all. And so for most pollutants, they really don't know what's coming out day to day. And that's one of the things that we'll be talking about, what we want to change at this facility. Uh, we also know that this company has a history of rigging their testing, coming up with test results that are not honest. They've been busted in other states. And that for some of these pollutants, there is no safe dose. So it doesn't matter if they say we're within a permit limit when they test once a year and don't, you don't know if they're actually at that all the time. But even if they are, that doesn't mean there's no health impacts, because there's not really a safe limit. It's just the limit that they were given in the permit. So when I talk about that, um. Uh, there's a speeding analogy I'd like to use when I talk about, um, what pollutants are only tested once a year. And that is if we tested speeding or regulated motorists. The same way we regulate most pollutants at smokestack facilities, we will let people drive around all year with no speedometer. And once a year on the highway, we would have a speed trap set, and there'll be warning signs, saying, warning, slow down, speed trap ahead. And the brother of the driver will be running the speed trap, cause the companies hire their own consultants to do the testing. They know what's coming up. That's literally how most smokestacks are, most pollutants at smokestack facilities are regulated in this country. And that's kind of sad, because the technology now exists for over fifty different pollutants to monitor them on a continuous basis. And yet it's not being required. And we know from analyses that I've done in some cases, like with hydrochloric acid. At the biggest incinerator in the country, which is one of the five surrounding where I live. That the hydrochloric acid is eighty percent higher shown by their continuous monitors than the once a year test. But your facility here, they don't use continuous monitors, so you only know the once a year results. In Europe, where for the most toxic chemicals, they've twice done studies of dioxins coming out. And one of the studies found that the real emissions with continuous monitoring were thirty to fifty times higher than what we think they are in the U S when they test one day a year. A more recent study found up to thirteen hundred times higher, which is just shocking. And so. We are proposing legislation here in Hawaii, based on a bill that I helped write that got passed recently in Oregon. Which will soon be the first state to require their only trash incinerator, and that state is also run by Cavanta. But so about a, a fifth or a sixth of the size of the one here. And the, no hard to read this one, but the first colorful column, the green ones are the pollutants that they have to continuously monitor. Yellow are once a year they're monitoring and red, they don't monitor at all. What we would like to do is change that to the next column where all those things in green are being continuously monitored. Because the technology exists to do it. Oregon will be the first guinea pig to actually make sure this happens. And that we have state regulators there that we have met with that have confirmed that, yes, this technology exists. It was actually developed in Oregon for the toxic metals that are a big part of that best. And we'll be able to look to them, and those regulators actually know some of the regulators here in their clean air branch and it's part of health. And are happy to talk to them and share their knowledge about what they're about to go through. And one of your legislators, um, Representative Lowen is interested in introducing this bill here. Um, so that we can have the same standards here and know what's really being put into the air, um, if we can get that bill passed. So, um, a couple more things here, then I'll, I'll wrap up and, and do Q and A if you have any questions. Um, on the ash, um, since that affects your same district here with the Wymanal Gosh landfill. Um, the analogy here with the coffee beans, the reason you have that on the slide. Is that if you pour water over coffee beans, obviously that's not how to make coffee. But if you grind them up and increase the surface area, now you can get coffee. It's the same principle with ash versus trash on a landfill. If you take this cell phone and truck it into a landfill. It's gonna be very hard for toxic metals or other materials in here to get to me in a way I can breathe, eat or drink them. But if you burn this, for every hundred tons that goes into H power, thirty tons of toxic ash are produced. And other seventy tons don't disappear. They don't turn into energy. They go out the smokestack. But the ash that comes out is much higher surface area. The toxic metals that are in there can blow off of trucks, they can blow off of the landfill. And rainwater can then pick up things and leach them into the groundwater more readily than if they were just the, the whole phone intact. And there are chemicals now in there that are not only more available, but new ones that were created in the combustion process. Like dioxins that weren't there to begin with, that make it even more dangerous. So there have been some studies of landfills versus incinerators, and I just wanna share some results of that real quick. And we'll pass some cover slides here. So Delaware County, Pennsylvania is just outside of Philadelphia. That's where the biggest incinerator in the country is. Also, a Cavanta plant is three thousand five hundred tons per day. And that county has developed a zero waste plan. I've helped consultants get hired for this and help develop this plan. That moves them away from incineration toward reducing waste as much as possible. And part of that study involved doing a lifecycle assessment of incineration versus landfilling. And what they found, the first two bars are the Cavanta incinerator. The second one is if they subtract the emissions of fossil fuel plants. That are being displaced by electricity they generate. So they oftentimes like to use that offset to say, well, we're actually this bad, not as bad as. The community actually gets directly. But comparing that to the landfill where their ash goes, where they'll soon be getting the trash directly. The landfill is far less harmful. It's still harmful. A lot of those harms in blue are the greenhouse gases being released from it. But you get more of that from the incinerator, but with incinerator, you also get the brown section, which is the particulate matter. Causing heart attacks and strokes. The red section, which is the toxic chemicals causing cancers and birth defects. The yellow section, which is the nitrogen oxides triggering asthma attacks. You get very little of that coming out of a landfill, but much more when you burn this and turn most of it into air pollution. And in that same study, they found that you get, if you switch from the incinerator, which is the first line, to the landfill. But also reducing waste a lot under the zero waste plan, once they implement it. Eighty-five percent reduction in the amount of harm to communities by doing all the right things. And then the benefits, the current benefits, that third line of the damage that's not happening from the recycling that's going on already. Versus the doubling of those benefits or the harm that's not happening to communities around the world where resources are extracted, produced. That is the benefit of having a zero waste system that you can have, and we'd love to see that here and everywhere. Now, this slide here is, is Hawaii specific. This was a study that was done for Big Island, looking at what to do with the recyclables. The first two columns are paper, the last two are plastics. And you can see that the green bars, which are the benefits of recycling, even when you have to ship it by barge thousands of miles. To get to markets in Asia that will recycle those materials. And I understand paper here is just going straight to H power. They're not even recycling that, even if you put it in a recycling bin. So it's hard for I to learn that. I'm gonna take some of that home with me and recycle it when I get back to the mainland. But, um, the brown lines here, that's the landfill. So the paper will degrade in landfill. You'll get greenhouse gases from that, and that's not good. Um, but it's even more of an impact when you burn it and put all that directly in the air. There's no carbon being sequestered when you burn it with the landfill, some of it stays there. And you see that much more with the plastics, where recycling in them is still better, even with all the shipping. But putting them in a landfill, very little impact. The plastics stay put in a landfill, and that's a good thing. Oftentimes they say, well, plastics, they go to landfill, they'll never go anywhere, and they make that sound bad. Well, if you're plastics, you can't recycle. It's much better that they go somewhere, they stay put, than you put them in the air and do as much damage as is happening when that happens. So, let's see, just wrap this up. A lot of health effects associated with incinerators or studies on that I can make available. Most of it are cancers that are increased. And yes, we're at the end. I dropped a lot of slides out of this to try to fit this in this time, but, um. There are other events where I'll be going more in depth into it. I spoke at the Capitol Building, um, earlier today. And there's a video of that, if you wanna see a, a longer version of this. Uh, there are also some events, um, Friday, Saturday and Monday, where we'll be taking a deeper dive of this, so I'm happy to share the details on that. And just answer any questions I have. So thank you.
So, thank you so much for your presentation. Are there any questions from fellow board members? Chair recognizes board member Tiara.
Hi, I just wanna say mahalo for that very intriguing, informative. Um, presentation. You obviously have a lot of experience and passion. There's a lot to take in, and I appreciate all of it. What is it that you want the most from the board tonight? I think that's the only thing that I, perhaps it's just me, that I'm missing that element. I'm super interested in what you're doing, especially if it's going to protect our community. From these toxic chemicals of which you spoke. So what, how could, what kind of support are you looking for, I think I'm asking?
Great. Um, so first, I would like to make it clear that I'm here to support you. That's what I do with communities around the country. Um, but to get more concrete about it, um, the events that are coming up, if you can help circulate that. Uh, we've made sure that some of the events are specifically on this side of the island, addressing the issues here. And we wanna get more people out, so we can get a deeper dive and really get folks more up to speed with what we can share about it. And also to make sure that you're sharing back with me, so I can make sure I can pronounce names correctly and also get all the details I should have. So I can be the best ally I can be. There's also, um. The need to be a watchdog for some of the newer things that are threatening. Like I know the refinery is talking about taking biofuels in, and that's something that is a bit of a false solution, and there's some concerns. I have just from what I've learned in other places with that. And if there are concerns that you share or things that you hear of, where companies are trying to make jet fuel or hydrogen or other things out of waste. Um, let me be a resource to you and help you learn what other communities have experienced with that and why it might be a bad idea. And how you can stop it if you agree that it's not good for your community. And then finally, um, there will be policies that we're working on as the Clean Power Task Force statewide. Been meeting with them weekly for the past year, and we'd love to have your support passing any resolutions or doing anything you can to help move those statewide policies. Into law to protect your own community and communities around the state.
Thank you. Um, any other questions or concerns from fellow board members? Chair recognizes Secretary Michael.
I think. Piggybacking a little bit, um, off of Tiara as well. What is, cause your presentation is talking trash. As a board. So much information. I tacos with you a few years ago with Brother Ulu Poa. I remember I got so much information from you, but just as a board, we've been talking trash too. For the last few meetings, like trash is like on our agenda regularly. Um, it's in our backyard. What advice do you have for us as a board moving forward? Like we've been tax exemptions, like. What can we do? What advice do you have for us? Because the trash is right here. What advice do you have for us as we make decisions and guide our community?
Sure. So the first thing I wanna impress and the reason why I brought some of these newer studies that we didn't have last year when we met. Um, some of this just came out, this data I'm sharing with you in the past year. Um, is understanding how much dangerous incineration is than even landfills. As bad as landfills are, I'm not saying landfills are good or that they should be here or anything like that. But incinerators are that much worse and they make the landfills that much more dangerous. That getting that understanding and prioritizing. That getting that understanding and prioritizing getting H power closed, I think is paramount. And recognizing that, you know, some of that's going to have to close soon anyway, just because it's going to be too old anyway. So let's have a plan for how to survive that so that you're not in five years facing a new plan to build a new big expanded incinerator. Which they'll surely come back with an idea and then you have to spend ten years fighting that potentially. But if you do the right things now, maybe that won't be the plan. And I'm hearing from other islands, I'm hearing folks in Hawaii where they're about to run out of landfill space. They're expanding a landfill and building a new one and in between the expansion filling up the new one, they're literally going to have at least a year of time when there's no place for the trash to go. And a council member last December, I was in a meeting with them and they said, one of the things we're thinking of is shipping it here to burn in your community. And I've heard folks in Big Island talking about taking one of their whole landfills, the closed old one on the east side in Kilo. And digging it up and barging it, barging it to here to burn and then shipping the ash back to the other side of the island to bury on the Kona side. Which is just insanity, but there's this idea that, well, they need more trash to burn here in Oahu. So we might as well take advantage of that and take ash, or sorry, trash from the other id- islands, burn it here. And then ship the ash back or who knows where, maybe it ends up staying here or maybe it goes um to Kona side on Big Island. But either way, it's just a terrible idea. And so recognizing that there are schemes afoot around this. And figuring out how we help all the islands do the right thing, not let this community become the sacrifice zone. And whether the landfill is going to end up staying here longer than you want it, which seems to be the track that they're on. Because any decision maker that looks at this and says, well, there's still space. Is going to choose that over picking a new spot in the landfill and pissing off new the community that's going to fight them for ten years anyway. So that's just the dynamic. I'm not saying that's what should happen. I'm saying that's what every government does. So that's likely to happen and it's a matter of how much you fight to make something else happen. But wherever the waste ends up in terms of a landfill. I would love there to be criteria that can be put forth across the whole island so that whoever's stuck with it, whether it's here or somewhere else. You can at least say, well, it should not take ash, there should not be an incinerator. It should not be where people are, should not have organics going in there unprocessed. All the things that makes sure that whoever is impacted by are as least impacted as possible. And that'll help whether it's your community or whoever else and help communities not be fighting each other. But at least having something that they can say, these are our demands that everyone can agree on.
Any other questions or concerns from fellow board members? Going to the community at large, Chair recognizes Uncle Frank Gennario.
Uh, yes, Frank Gennario, uh, uh, based on the figures you you came up with. It looks like about five hundred and fifty tons of ash are created on an average day. Uh, there was a UH study done a couple of years ago about plasma arc gasification plant that would have removed that ash. Has anybody been talking about uh that locally?
Um, yes, plasma arc is one of the incinerator type of technologies they've talked about building here. I don't think it's gotten anywhere and usually that technology fails both technically and financially. It's been tried for decades and it's a type of incineration that they fall on their sword and say it's not an incinerator. Because it's a, it's incineration in two steps. And so they say, well, we're not burning here, we're just burning in the second step, but we'll try kind of distract you from that. But when you look at how EPA defines and regulates it, it's still defined and regulated as an incinerator. And it's still, when you look at this as a one step o- overall thing and not just the fact that they're breaking combustion into a two step process. It's effectively the same thing. It's just much more expensive, much more technically challenging. They can't operate continuously or at the same scale without breaking down, stopping and starting a lot. And just spending a lot more money on something that generally doesn't work. So there are a lot of folks that keep hyping up this technology. But no one has really done this at a commercial scale successfully. And even at the small pilot scales, they break down all the time. It's just, it's not going to make sense and still the same bad idea just remixed.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns from fellow community members? Chair recognizes.
So when I first met Mike and I saw him taking pictures of the H power and I found out what he was doing. My word says exactly, you are my friend, I need to talk to you. Remember that? Okay, so anyways, um, I just want to say, the reason why is because, you know, a lot of us believe it, okay? I moved off island when I joined the army for years and then I went, I move off island again to Guam for five years. But every time I come home to the family house, noisy. But when the winds come from the south, from the part from Chamo industrial. And I notice it's getting harder and harder to breathe. And the only other alternative is I just getting old. And I thinking, no, but I see, I see the flame out, you know, I know it's out there, all that rubbish out there. And then also when we work on the endangered plant sanctuary, there's times where like our eyes like just burning. But we didn't have proof. So your expertise, that's the proof we need. And we need a landfill guy like you that can break down all the contamination coming from the, from the landfill. Because it shouldn't be one or the other. Because we know we're getting contamination from both sources. So I would just like to say, all of those things that he recommends, I say we should support. Continuous monitoring, put in those extra filters. And at the same time, we should still be. And said, time to close Wyman Allo landfill. It shouldn't be because of that, because it is, you know, like we still got to stay, stay grounded on that. Because you know, that was supposed to be closing two thousand and two. This is twenty years after that plus, right, tax plus that. So we need to still say that, that, you know, and it's kind of like, it's contradictory. Because the H power, the reason why the H power was good was because that was going to be less trash for a landfill. But they both contaminating us and I live right between both of them, literally. So anyways, um, but the last thing I wanted to bring up is that. Wanting to consider putting forth is that. This H power and who's responsible and for any infractions. And same with the landfill, even after it closes, they need to continue studies. And you know, some of that funding or whatever money, it should go back to the community for our health conditions. Because we cannot afford healthcare as it is. And you know, all those things that you listed, that is a, you know, asthma and um, and cancers. And then from the landfill, all of those chemicals, like we, we, we taking the brunt, but we're not getting no help for the medical care. So that's all. So thank you.
Mahalo, we have two minutes before our hard deadline. So with that, I wanted to thank the presenter and the host community members. Uh, if there are any further questions from the community of board members, please send it to the chair. And then I will try to communicate with um our presenter, uh, if he didn't provide his information in the slides. Uh, please reach out to him directly if he did.
And I'll, I'll share the information on the upcoming events with you if you're able to distribute them. Um, love to have folks connect with them. Thank you.
Mahalo, we appreciate the good work that you're doing. Um, with that, uh, we do have a. One item that I would like to do in board business, uh, if, if it is all right with the board, which is making the request. Uh, for the military fuel storage, um, pilot energy service couple and location from the appropriate parties. If the board uh would do me the favor of considering that and the chair recommends we adopt.
So.
It's been moved by Board Member Miki Alonzo. Is there a second? It's been second by Board Member Amy Bosler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say a ole. Any abstentions they can undo. If hearing none, the chair calls unanimous from all those members present, recognizing um Michael, Gary and online. Great. With that, um, everything else is tableled for next meeting. Uh, but the chair would like to, before the announcements, kindly ask the presenter, um, if they could work with us offline. In order to write suggestions on the resolutions that our board is considering as we talk opalos, uh, how to move forward, that would be greatly appreciated. Um, announcements, the next scheduled meeting of the Mopka Couple of Neighborhood Board number thirty four is Wednesday, October twenty fifth at twenty twenty three. And you can find all of the handouts in person here, online in our digital cloud device on Google. Check it out on the city's website for Neighborhood Board Underarms. And with that, um, thank you very much, everyone for being here with us this evening. We appreciate you being here and participating in your democracy. Mahalo, we are and we are adjourned.
Hello, everybody.
Aloha.
Hello.
Aloha.
This is a.